I'm assuming you guys are ready.
The meeting will begin in three, two, one.
I now call the meeting of the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I apologize that traffic this morning was horrible. I was on a job site this morning. I planned to get back in time to change into my suit, but I was unable to. So we move on. Welcome to the Hillsborough County Code Enforcement Special Magistrate hearing. When addressing the special magistrate, please state your name, address, and speak clearly into the microphone. If you are planning to speak during this hearing, you must sign the speaker's list, locate the front door for the record. Presentations by the county, respondents, and opposition must be kept to a maximum of 10 minutes each. Special magistrate may recess at 12:30 and reconvene at 1:30 to conclude its business if needed. Basic process for this hearing is as follows. Your case will be announced. Ms. Rodriguez will conduct the oath of witness. Staff will present their evidence on your case, and then you will be allowed to rebut that evidence and explain what has occurred. We'll close the hearing and announce the decision. All decisions are based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator, and the violator's history. I may ask questions and allow other witness testimony if necessary. If I issue an order for compliance, it's your responsibility to notify the code enforcement officer on or before the date ordered to demonstrate that the violation has been corrected. Depending on my order, the code enforcement staff may later have to conduct inspection to see if you have complied. If the staff believes you have not complied, you receive a notice in the mail. By law, you have 10 days to contest that notice. Otherwise, it will be considered correct, and a lien may be filed against your property. If you have any questions, these rules are outlined by Hillsborough County Codes of Ordinances and Laws, Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14. Any person who decides to appeal a decision to the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate will need a record of the proceedings. The record is comprised of the testimony, evidence upon which an appeal is based. It's your responsibility to ensure the verbatim record of the proceedings is made. By law, you have 30 days from the date of my order to appeal the special magistrate's decision to circuit court. And before we begin, please silence all electronic devices. First, our business. We approve the amendments for May 3, May 13, and June 24. And we are ready to administer the oath.
Will all county staff please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated. First case on the agenda is item number, on page number two, item three, case number CE21013683, Rigoberto Villagomez, Denise Karina Perez-Raya. The location is 1208 Windermere Way, and we have service, and someone is present. Please come forward. You're dead, too?
Oh, there we are. Looks like it's gonna be that kind of day.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Each of you take turns, but state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rigoberto Villagomez, and my address is 23, 233 Way Kiki Way, Tampa, Florida, 33619. And but the case we have is 1208 Windermere Way, Tampa, Florida.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Denise.
Can you pull the mic down so you could speak into it?
My name is Denise Perez. My address is 233 Way Kiki Way, Tampa, Florida, 3619. And the case is the...
The same case.
The same case.
Okay. Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, officer.
Good morning, magistrate. Officer Dan Green.
Microphone, sir.
Officer Dan Green, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This is in regards to case CE21013683, 1208 Windermere Way, Tampa, Florida, 33619. And basically, the offenses are that there are accessory uses without a primary use, open storage of construction materials, and overgrowth at the time that the case was cited. The overgrowth has been brought into compliance, but we have the accessory structure and the swimming pool. For some reason, the house was demoed, and we're not showing that there's any indication that a primary structure is going to be placed back on the property. Maybe the property owners can give us information what their plans are.
Good morning, sir.
How you doing, sir?
What can you tell me?
Yeah, well, we buy the property like it is with a swimming pool. I got it. I can show you says it's gonna be workable. The homeowner who sell it put new equipment and everything. What I do for living is remodel swimming pools. So we, I mean, eventually, I didn't know that they tried, they said that we gotta close the pool. I called to the city and said that I wanna build a little porch because this happened really with COVID was real bad. I got three children, and you know, it's not easy with three children. So I made that barn myself, and then I put a little bit of stuff on my work, you know what I mean? But I had everything, I cut the grass, everything, I try to make everything clean. Now, I try to see what we can do because the other officer we used to hire is Leon, I can't remember the last name, he's the one I've been...
Officer Sadler.
Leon something, I can remember that the one I was speaking to. So he told me we gotta close the pool or take the barn. I said, what if I gotta take the barn? I mean, they told me 150 square feet that I can build, and I said, if I have to do that, do that, because you know, it's not house eventually there. So eventually, to the time, I was investigate what I can do because I cannot put a mobile home, I cannot pull like a more house or nothing because the way it is in these days is suspense of the bill house. But eventually, being my white token, we try to save money and everything. I got a case now that I got the permit in process, and I got the plans and everything that I can show you. We're gonna try to build a house.
So you've submitted for a building permit for the home?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, one of the, the inspector for the city is Rick Friendly, the one he's been helping with the case, and he gave me the, I got the case number. That's the permit number. And also, I had the, I had the drawings for the house, you know, how the house. So eventually, I'm just waiting for the city to let me know till we start building. But I got, I got proof, I got everything is done. I do a survey for the property when I bought it, was no survey. I got, I got everything here, so you guys wanna look at it?
Sounds like you're headed the right direction. Officer, if they go through the building permit process and build a home, is what they've done here as far as accessory structure permit allowable?
Once the permit is actually submitted and the review process has gone through and they have an issued permit, then yes, they'll have up to six months to construct the house, and those structures are allowed to be there as long as they have a building permit active with the building department. Right now, the violation is they cannot have storage, they can't have an accessory structure or an accessory use at all without a primary structure. So once they do get the approved to build plans, then that's on them to complete the project, and the violation would technically be complied once the house is built.
Okay.
They would just need the time to go through the review process. I don't know. They must have just submitted this.
It's been, it's been already like couple months. So everything, I mean, you gotta look at in the city, everything is there.
Well, if you give us a copy of it, we have to keep it. So I don't want you to give me a copy of what you have as far as your building, your...
No, no, I can, I can give, I got more copy. I can make copy, that's not a big deal, you know what I mean? But you got, I got a case number, I got everything.
Inspector Finley is with code compliance in the building department. So he was cited for a case for not having the proper permits in place. So Inspector Finley works with them to try to get them the plan submitted into the review process.
Understand. Well, tell me about the outside open storage, then. How can we solve that issue?
Okay, the trailer and that, that's not a big deal. I gonna move that.
Not a big deal, okay.
That's, I mean, I already moved, does not even look like that anymore. I already moved most of the things because also the guy who was taking, he told me I can put the papers inside the porch, and I told him to me, it's kinda dumb, sorry, but it's kinda dummy, you know what I mean? So, and like I say, in the pool, I bought the property with a pool, and I got a paper with says with a pool and everything. So building a pool in these days is real expensive.
Understand. How much time do you need to take care of the outside open storage? So it's completely gone, so the officer can come out, check that off?
You mean storage, you mean the porch?
No. The materials, trailers, and all the things that you have from the construction side.
That's pretty much done.
Okay, so you can, if I give a short timeline, a week, he can come out and check and verify that that's good.
Yeah, yeah, that, 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 probably only what I gotta do, waiting for a tire for the other trailer because it's low, two tires, but that, I can, that can be done in a week, the most.
Okay. All right. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna rule for seven days on that to have you take that, getting that taken care of, and have him come out, verify that that's been cleaned up, and then I'll continue the accessory use for 60 days. So you'll come back here in 60 days. You'll bring all your materials by then. You should have a permit issued by then. We can verify that the permit's been issued, and then you can deal with code enforcement with that six-month period while you're...
Okay, so, so pretty much, even if the trailer is empty, I mean, the trailer is empty now, it's clean, but I can allow the, have the trailer there, just park into our building?
No, sir. Technically, in zoning, you're not allowed to have any type of use of the property until you have a primary structure. The only time that you could have the trailer and building materials is once you have an active building permit, and those materials are going towards building the primary structure.
Okay, question, like I says, I got three kids, and we, because the pool moving, the pool working, I remodel the pool, like I said, I do that for living. Can I'm allow a little go and swim with my kids?
Technically, there, in the zoning laws, you're not allowed to use any accessory use until you have a primary. You cannot use the property for storage, for recreation, anything of that nature until you have a home on the property.
Well, I guess I understand that part, I'll do it, but I have to be moving the water. I'm not gonna leave the water.
You can maintain your property and maintain the pool, but you can't have pool parties and invite all your friends over and use it like a park. You can't use it only for the house. Once the house is there, then you can use everything accessory to it.
Okay. And then you can follow up with the officer through this process, and keep you up to date on how to do, what you need to do, okay?
So who I gotta call now? You, so I need your information, please.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. I rule in case CE21013683, the basis of the present, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity of violation, the action taken by violator and the violator's history, I grant a two-part motion. Item Z203, outside open storage, seven days, $200 per day. And item Z205, accessory use without primary use, continued for 60 days to the September 20 hearing. Excellent. Next case, please.
Next case is on page two, item five, case number CE22000081, Juan Don, Don Batch, Mae Miley Don. The location is 1 right of way, and we have service, and someone is present virtually. Tia Schrader?
Good morning. I'm Tia Schrader. I'm representing for the property of...
Where are you? I can't see you. I need to see you. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Tia Schrader, 4510 Causeway Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33619.
And do you recognize that photo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, magistrate.
Good morning.
Officer Dan Green, this is regards to case CE22000081, 1 right of way, Tampa, Florida, 33619. This is in the direct proximity to the front of 4510 Causeway Boulevard. The case here is the expansion of the use there on the commercial general property, the wrecked cars, trailers, rollback tow trucks, the front of the property, which is out by the telephone poles, is the county and state DOT right of way. That's not allowed to be used to support your property's business.
Okay. Ms. Schrader, what would you like to tell me?
So the property is being rented to Mr. Victor Perry, and we have been working with him, and he's been quite uncooperative. However, within the last week, we were able to get him to clear all the vehicles that are in violation. So just to request Officer Green to come out, back out and re-inspect. So we're currently in compliance with the code now, and also additionally, working on evicting Mr. Perry from the property so to not have this happen again.
Okay. Ms. Schrader, what's your relation to the owners?
I'm the sister to the owner, and unfortunately, I'm testing COVID positive, so she asked me to represent and interpret for her.
No problem. Okay, so we're in compliance, so you need a short term to have the officer come back and re-inspect?
Yes.
Okay. No problem. I'll make that happen. Thank you very much for coming online today.
Thank you.
Everyone, case CE22000081, the basis of the present, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $200 per day be assessed. All right. He'll be out within the next week to take a look.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader. Have a great day.
You, too.
Next case, please.
Page three, item six, case number CE21014162, the estate of Chester A. Pierce. The location is 523 North Domino Drive. We have service, and someone is present. Ma'am, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Brenda Sammy, 925 Winton Oak Drive, Ruskin, Florida, 33570.
And your relationship to this case?
It's my brother's property.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Officer Watson.
Good morning, Officer Watson. With Hillsborough County Code Enforcement here for CE21014162, which is at 523 North Domino Drive, Ruskin, Florida, 33570. I have been in contact with the owners, said we spoke on the property, and we've also spoke via the phone. There are, they've been working on the conditions. They had tenants in there previously that kind of destroyed the place, and all violations are still in, on the property with the exception of the roof. They have had that repaired, so accumulation, smoke detectors, windows, exterior doors, interior surfaces, ceilings, and outside open storage. As of 10/7/2021, those were still in violation. They've had two prior cases in the past five years, CE17016795, and 9/26/2017 for inoperable vehicles, and CE21005361 for outside open storage. In both cases have been complied.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, Ms. Brenda, you got the tough one done with the roof. How much time do you think you need to do the remaining? I see the pictures.
As you see.
Yeah, and I saw you in them, so I know you're working at it, so...
Yeah. I just had my sister pass away in April.
I'm very sorry.
The people that are staying in the place, they just ended up with COVID, and their son is, just was admitted into the hospital. So they're pretty much, I need a little, at least three months to finish complying. We did do a lot of the outside, most of that was all cleaned up. There's no more debris. I have pictures, but I wasn't able to present them. They're on my phone.
If you do that, then I keep your phone. I hope it's a nice one.
Thank you. I need it.
Understand.
But all the debris that you see in, out here in the yard was all cleaned up.
Is the tenant still in the property?
Yes. But windows has been repaired, doors has been replaced, windows have been fixed. The major that needs to still be done was painting and the ceiling...
Smoke detectors.
And the smoke detectors we have. We just gotta put them up, which I could have that done today.
Okay.
This is their only place to live, so I'm not trying to make them homeless with a newborn in hospital.
Understand. By the same token, if you have a tenant and it's good to remain occupied, then there are some things that are obviously life safety issues that need to be taken care of sooner than later. So 90 days is not gonna be acceptable for those. So I'd be happy to give you 60 days on the accumulations and the outside open storage, but the other items are really life safety items that need to be done in a shorter timeline. So you already have the windows and exterior doors complied?
Yeah, the doors are already on.
And you have the smoke detectors?
Smoke detectors have been purchased, yes.
Okay, so we're just dealing with interior surfaces and ceilings? Can I see the pictures? Do we have pictures of the interior surface and ceiling?
Yep.
Oh.
That's...
And that's damaged from the roof, but the roof's been replaced?
From the other tenants, correct.
Okay, so that's not an active leak?
No, it's not.
Okay. All right. So I'm, I'm gonna give you a two-part motion as well. I'm gonna give you a shorter timeline on the exterior, on the life safety issues to have the inspector come out and verify that those are complete, and then I'll give you 60 days on the accumulations and outside open storage to give you some time to get that taken care of, since you have an active tenant, okay? And I appreciate the communication with the officer. That goes a long way.
No, I do. I try to, I try to speak with him as much as I can. I work two jobs as well, so...
Totally, I get it. And I'm taking into account the fact that you've complied in your previous two cases as well. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I rule in case CE21014162, the basis of the present, find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant a two-part motion for items R11.10.1, smoke detectors, item R11.7.9, windows, exterior doors, items, item R11.8.4, interior surfaces. 10 days, $150 per day. And then on the remaining items of item PM12.1 accumulations, items R11.8.6, ceilings, and item Z203, outside open storage, I grant 60 days, $200 per day.
I'm sorry.
Okay, ma'am. So on the, on the life safety issues, you have seven days to get the, or I'm sorry, 10 days to get those complied. Otherwise, there's a fine, and he'll come out and check that within 10 days. And then on the other items, the outside open storage, the accumulation, the ceilings, you have 60 days to get those completed.
Okay.
Okay?
Um, now, question, I'm being fined for something, but this, this is my brother's property. He did pass away. I'm not on the papers. I'm just trying to get it complied.
Right. I totally understand.
To be able to do anything with it. So...
You'll explain?
Okay. I don't understand. I'm just saying, why am I being fined? Because it's...
You're not, the estate.
The estate is, okay.
Correct. That's where it goes, so...
I don't, I haven't had to deal with this before, so...
I understand. 10 days, 150 per day on the first, and 60 days, 200 on the balance. 200 per day. So just stay in touch with the officer through that process. You'll get the life safety done, issues done, and then you'll have 60 days to complete the accumulations and the outside storage.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Ms. Brenda. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next case, please.
Next case is item seven, case number CE21014772, First Street Southwest Trust. The location is 1410 First Street Southwest. We have service, and someone is present. Please come forward. So raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
1613 Meridian Street. My name is Edward Kramer.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Officer?
Good morning. Officer Watson with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement here for CE21014772 at 1410 First Street Southwest, 33570 Ruskin, Florida. I have been in contact with the owner. We've met on the property and discussed different ways to come into compliance. Currently, the current violations are accumulations and outside open storage. The property is zone RSC6, and has outdoor open storage of rocks, dirt piles, and there are construction equipment stored on the property along with accumulations. One violation in the past five years, CE20016992 on 1113/2020 for accumulations of tree debris.
Complied?
And it was complied, correct.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Kramer, what would you like to tell me?
Well, I've gotten rid of most of the heavy equipment off of there, the larger stuff. It's been hard with the, the open storage. I purchased the steel to enclose that building. Would help today, COVID, just work in generals, hard to get it done. The dirt, we moved in and out. We had to dig all this up. This property was basically leveled out with concrete, busted block, busted. So as I dig it out, I fill it back in with the dirt, get rid of crap. I have a application in for green belting. We wanna put trees on it, fruit trees and so forth. That's, I'm just, I'm in a, I'm in a rough spot with helping to be able to get it done in the time periods. We've, we've moved a lot of the, and a lot of it I've inherited from the property. It was in open storage for 30 years. Shit has piled up on that property forever, and I've gotten rid of most of it, some that has just not been dealt with. And we spoke, and he knows that I'm moving stuff in and out, but it's no different than coming home with a company truck and parking. Evidently, it's been a common problem since the Mary Martha House has upgraded to a new building, and they were eventually, they evidently were the ones to put the complaint in, and I've only owned the property for a year, so, I mean, I'm working on it, and I'm trying to increase its value. I put a blind of banana trees up to make it look good. I mean, I'm working on it.
Understand. How much time do you think you need to be able to complete that process?
The, the materials that are up there, the dirt, is all refuge, so I could probably get that off within a couple of weeks. The other trailers and so forth, some of it was on the property. There's no ownership to it. We're trying to find it. It's almost impossible to get a title. Certain things you can't, you can't scrap because, you know, it's hell, man. So I would ask for 60 days, and I can keep in touch with the inspector if you'd like. Let him know how far we're getting along.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the officer on 60 days? I don't know, is it neighborhood or...
No.
Other than the additional complaint, anything concerned?
Just one thing to bring to your attention that was not cited.
Please.
This is a business operation in a residential RSC6 zoning area, and what's not cited was accessory use without primary, so the whole operation should not even be there.
Okay. We didn't cite for that, so we can't rule on that today.
Correct. But it's something to keep in mind, that he needs to remove what, from the property, not excuses of bringing stuff in and out.
Sounds like the county is giving you a nudge to let you know that that's not allowed in that particular zoning district. We're not... that's not allowed in that particular zoning district. We're not dealing with that issue today.
I think I understand all that. So the operating of a business.
Correct.
So in order, in order, in order to greenbelt the application, you have to operate a business a year prior to it. So they almost put you in violation in order to apply for the greenbelt? You do understand that?
But you're not greenbelted currently.
We have an application in for that.
But you're not currently greenbelted?
No.
So you're in violation?
Understand that.
I understand. I understand the rock and the hard place. I'm just dealing with the technicality of what it is. So they're making you aware that that use is not allowed in that particular zoning. So hopefully your greenbelt process will, will move along and that won't become an issue. As I mentioned, you, you haven't been cited for, I'm not dealing with that issue today.
I understand.
They're just providing that information. So in regards to the accumulations outside of open storage, I don't have any problem with 60 days. So I'll be happy to do 60 days of my ruling.
I do appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. I rule in case CE 21014772, that basically as presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant 60 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $175 per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Next case is on page four, item eight, case number CE 21015200, South Shore Tires and Auto Center. The location is one right of way. We have service and someone is present virtually. Jose Juan Garcia.
Uh, yes, um, my name is Rosalinda Reyna. I'm an agent for South Shore Tire and Auto Center.
Just, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Rosalinda Reyna, R E Y N A. Address is 231 Toby Martin Lane, Ruskin, Florida, 33570.
What was your last name? I'm sorry.
Reyna, R E Y N A.
And your relationship to this case?
I'm the new office manager for South Shore.
Is there a Juan Garcia on?
Yeah, Juan Garcia is right here.
Okay, he must take the O2 if he's gonna be speaking.
Levante la mano derecha.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
Jose, my name is Jose Juan Garcia.
Yes.
There may get any.
Yes.
Uh, my address, 5641 St. Rose 674, Wyomama, Florida, 33598.
Okay. Thank you. Do you recognize that photo?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Officer Watson?
Officer Watson, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case number CE 21015200. So one right of way. The physical location is 5641 674 Highway Wyomama, Ruskin, Florida, 33598. I have been in contact with the owner and his son there on the property. Um, and we have corresponded via emails and that he's since has emailed me saying that it is in compliance. Um, as of the expectation, expectation of 11/4/2021, there was one violation and improper use of occupancy of public right of way. This case was referred by the sheriff's office where a vehicle, vehicle is being parked in the right of way and being worked on. There have been several inspections at the dislocation review and the vehicles being parked and worked on in the county right of way.
Okay, so we're asking for a remaining compliance?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Reyna, what would you like to add?
Uh, we have since complied. Um, I have photographs to show that it is in compliance now. Um, I thought that the, uh, inspector had already come in. I was gone on vacations and I just started this new position, uh, about three weeks ago. I emailed, uh, the code enforcement agent, uh, Mr. Allen, and, um, I was in the understanding, I haven't made it to my office back since I just got in from vacations, uh, a couple, two days ago. And as it's my understanding, it was already in compliance when I was leaving, uh, last week.
That, that is the testimony of the officer. It is in compliance. So what I'm going to order is that it remain in compliance based on the history of the case, okay? So basically you just need to keep it clean and we'll be in good shape.
All right. Thank you.
Hope you enjoyed your vacation. Thank you very much, ma'am, for coming online.
Mm, bye-bye.
Bye. I rule in case CE 21015200, that basically as presented, I find the property was in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances as presented. Further, I find the property is now in compliance with this code provision in order that it remain in compliance with this code provision.
Next case is item number nine, case number CE 21015374, Joseph L. Green Jr. and Dawn M. Green. Location is 705 Southwest 10th Avenue. We have service and someone is present virtually.
Hello, yes.
And is that Joseph Green?
Yes, it is.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Green, 705 10th Avenue, Southwest Ruskin, Florida.
Thank you. Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Officer?
Yes, sir. So CE 21015374, I'm Officer Watson with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, um, 705 Southwest 10th Avenue, Ruskin, Florida, 33570. Um, the initial inspection was 11/9/2021 with two violations of accumulations and overgrowth. The case was referred to an ADX, a property as overgrowth and accumulations. There have been several site visits and the property is still in violation. In the last five years, this is the only case that was current.
Okay, Mr. Green, what would you like to add?
Um, well, I actually do not live at the property. My two orders, or my two sons do. Uh, I went to divorce about three years ago. The house is still owned by me and my ex. Um, I didn't know this was even coming. My kids didn't tell me. And, uh, my new girlfriend found out, went online, did all this. She actually spoke, I believe, to the officer at one time and went and picked up paperwork from the door, um, which has only been maybe a week or 10 days. Uh, since then, I've taken over a dump trailer. I had the kids completely loaded up, went over there, cleared. Trees on the right-hand side. The tree debris still needs to be taken out because the dump trailer is completely full again. So it's going out again today, but yes, I've gotten them on it. I all does.
It's always good to have help.
Well, it's good when your kids want to tell you and not scared to tell you and don't.
Excellent. How much time do you think you need for your boys to get the accumulations and overgrowth completed?
Um, 30 days.
Okay.
And here's the thing, um, you, you do have officers.
Yeah, I have.
Okay, so what, I, I don't necessarily need that long. And soon as I get it done, I'll call in, but if you can give me 30, 60, but I will be on it. I'm already on it.
No problem. I'll give you a ruling for 30 days. Just stay in touch with Officer Watson.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming on. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too, though.
I rule in case CE 21015374, that basically as presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant 30 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $200 per day be assessed. Thank you. Next case, please.
Next case is on page 19, item 42, case number CE 20002623, RV Realty, Realty, Realtor, Florida Real Estate LLC. The location is 1598 East US Highway 92. This is a request for a rehearing. Do you have the write-up?
I do, thank you.
And there was also a letter that was submitted.
Okay.
And we have people present. Sir, is, I have three people signed up. Are you the only one that's gonna be presenting?
Uh, I, quite possibly, yes. There, I have a number of other colleagues who are here, uh, so I don't know if the other people who signed up are my colleagues. I, I'll be the only one speaking for the owner.
I have a Megan Smith.
Yeah, she will, she's working with me. I'll be speaking.
And McComas Grace.
That is not me.
Please come forward. Can you both raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And each of you take turns, state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Richard Lawson with the law firm of Gardner-Burrard Hudson, uh, 400 North Ashley Drive, Suite 1100, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
Ma'am?
Grace McComas, 805 Old Darby Street, South Florida, 33584.
And what is your relationship to this case?
Um, in rebuttal of their case or.
Okay, thank you. Let, let the attorney come forward. Thank you. Do you recognize that photo?
Um, actually, uh, no, but I, I will take the code enforcement word for it that that is the, the property in question.
Thank you.
Good morning, officer.
Good morning. Officer Chris Masson, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Case number CE 20002623. This case has no life safety issues. The property is located 1598 East US Highway 92 and owned by RV Retailer Florida Real Estate LLC. It's currently zoned AR. Property's not in foreclosure. My first inspection was 02/25/2020. The original case started December 17th, 2017. The violation is improper use of zone. I have a timeline I want to go over. There's been 30 inspections conducted and I have talked with the general manager and attorney in the past with my final inspection on the 15th of this month. This is, um, the property that's in question. If we could scroll through. This is, um, the property where they cross over to the property and that's actually Tico's property.
Next slide, please.
Looking in the opposite direction. These are the trailers that are in question that are on the property. Here's the timeline I was stating. The case started 11/29/2017 and was owned by Strorello Development Tampa LLC. The case was first referred on January 2nd, 2018 and scheduled on 3/16/2018 for the hearing we're at today. New ownership, case was closed. The new case opened 3/2/2020 and was referred again on 4/7/2020. In 2019, zoning application was withdrawn on 4/29/20. It was scheduled for a hearing like today as well. The hearing was canceled on 7/14/2020. And as of 9/16/2020 was 148 days consecutive with no progress. The third hearing was scheduled on 9/22/2020 and once again canceled 02/12/2020. Or excuse me, 2021. I apologize. The fourth hearing was scheduled 2001/2022 was scheduled on 4/11/2022. The last zoning application from the zoning hearing masters was withdrawn on 6/13, or excuse me, 6/7. We had, uh, hearing on 6/10 and it was adjudicated with fines running on the property. And all violations still remain.
Okay.
As far as the county's testimony, I want to make great emphasis that there is a, uh, more of an MO here of carrying out with the application and then pulling it, uh, and then starting over again. And then another thing to take into consideration is the, the issue that they're going to have is they have two pieces of land that is separated by another piece of land. So they have use, uh, a non-continuous use that would not be permitted. And, uh, I don't know whether they're, they have or will ever get approval from Tico to, uh, would basically have to sell them a piece of the property.
Can you bring the aerial back up for me, please? Okay, counselor, what would you like to tell me?
Sure. Well, um, certainly I'm not going to dispute the factual history here. Um.
That's a good sign.
Yeah. The, the biggest thing I think I would like to make is, uh, there's sort of two buckets at play. One is the code enforcement citation and the other is the rezoning process. Uh, the current owner bought the property after the citations have been put into play. I think there were four, um, original citations. Three have been cleaned up. You'll see the sort of dirt parking lot, uh, kind of just to the left of the red box. If we can go back to the previous screen. There we are. Um, so, oh, there we are. Let's stay here. Uh, so that's the lot that is being used. The red spot or the red box there, that is the Tico property. Um, what the rezoning process has been involved with, and it takes a lot of time to put these together, do traffic studies and so forth. You'll see up in the top right as I'm looking at it. I assume that's the same for you. You'll see I-4 running along the north, then it comes down, I believe that's McIntosh Road. The entrance is actually all up in that corner. You've got like a Burger King, McDonald's, I think a gas station, Walgreens all up there and the entrance to this RV area. So that's, uh, running along just south of I-4 is our, is our property. And then that, that's sort of a storage area that's over on the far westerly side, just to the west of the, the red box Tico area. So our proposal, uh, before zoning, that, uh, my firm had been engaged, again, the, the current owner came in 2018. My firm had been engaged, I think, in 2020, right when the, the virus came along. We put together an original zoning package, take some time to do all those traffic studies up there and so forth. It finally got submitted and I believe it was September of '21. Those have a, about a six-month time period. The issue came up about the Tico property and having, uh, we had a, uh, I think the original proposal and the rezoning effort was to have a one-year uh, renewal over the property and the zoning department for the county was like, no, that's not sufficient. You need to have it more permanent. So we had to yank that, uh, application and that was in early June. As far as the, the hearing that was before, I believe this magistrate, um, in, in June, the, uh, where we were not here, we were under the impression that it would still continue to stay. That was a misunderstanding on our part that the, that this proceeding would stay pending the rezoning. Again, going back to that concept of the two buckets, the code enforcement and the zoning issue. So we have been in touch with Tico. Um, we are nearing completion with a full permanent easement for that, that little path, and you can see it there, running from the lot over. Um, it will allow for a more formalized, uh, the whole revision or revised plan development will have a revised, uh, uh, storage area. It will be 15 of those acres. The majority of it will stay woodland. And most importantly, there will be a, uh, formal entrance going down. That's 92 at the bottom of this image. So that will start to relieve some of the traffic from that major corner up there. These are all points and arguments, of course, for rezoning, not for the code enforcement magistrate here. But this is part of why our request here is that we toll and stay this proceeding, toll or suspend all the tolls that are fined, toll all the fines that have been imposed and stay this proceeding. The specific ask would be till March. We did resubmit a new plan development referencing the new Tico proposal, which my understanding, I've, I believe I can fully represent, is that was the big issue for the county rezoning issue. Uh, our department was this Tico gag. We believe we have that settled now. We'll know that it's about a six-month clock and we've resubmitted. We'll know that it's about a six-month clock and we've resubmitted in, uh, Jul-, uh, Friday for the rezoning. Uh, it's about a six-month clock. So we'll know by January, February, does it work? If it doesn't work, is what, are, is it fixable? Are there other issues that a, a new easement or something will take care of? Or is it just not going to work? But again, I think if we, again, it was a misunderstanding on our part that the last hearing in June, there was, it was not going to be heard. And so that's why we're coming here today with it having been heard, the fines having been imposed, why we're asking for those fines to be lifted and the, this proceeding stayed. Again, this is a, a two buckets. I'm not asking the magistrate and I, I don't think you would want to get into the world as to whether or not that easement is sufficient on here. But I think if we can just continue to, to hold it in pattern, we are looking for compliance. We've got months and years worth of efforts to try to get this property into compliance and we're continuing on with it and we think it's going to work this time. But we'll know by March if it's going to work. So that's the ask here.
So the, as representing the owner, the owner's intent is to be in compliance, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no, we can, we, 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 we've been trying to submit again, the issue, they have a six, they have, I believe it's a six-month time permit. So when we submitted in September twenty-one, after all the continuance, it expired by June. Uh, so that's why we had to repackage, the discrete issue being that how do we get over the Tico property and make that permanent? Tico's represented, they'd be willing to give it a permanent easement. Um, so that's really our ask is let's just pause for a little bit, see if we can get into compliance through the rezoning process. And if, and hopefully by March, we'll either know, yes, it's worked, uh, no, it hasn't worked and here's a specific reason. We'll be asking maybe for more time if it's something fixable or we'll figure out what Plan B might be.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. McCombs. What would you like to add?
I, I don't like to add, I want to oppose most of what he's just said.
Okay.
Uh, Grace McComas, eight oh five Old Darby Street, Sefner. Stand by your previous ruling. Do not allow this applicant to alter or delay the fines adjudicated at this wildlife habitat, environmentally sensitive, important watershed to our Hillsborough County water supply. These rural area violations have been addressed by code enforcement ever since two thousand and sixteen for the unpermitted filling of a hundred-year floodplain, then the open storage of trailers in rural area. At that time, map showed a little over a hundred trailers. No effort has ever been made to, I, to correct either of them, other than talk or emails. Having told the zoning hearing master and the B O C C that they would remove the trailers within one month, once they have the certificate of occupancy for the Airstream PD in two thousand and sixteen. Instead, they have continued to increase the number of trailers, as witnessed by code, now over two hundred. At two of the PD hearings, their intent was to continue to be in violation until they approved the PD zonings they were pursuing, stating then they would not be in violation. The three PD requests in two thousand and eighteen and two in two thousand and twenty-one did not result in a PD. The applicant withdrawing the last one on June seventh, two thousand twenty-two. They're literally requesting a hearing claim, three of the four violations have been closed, not saying that one was closed because information given to code was untrue. From the code record, code was led to believe it was a PD. Unable to find information to support that, the code officer spoke with a representative, Mr. Tim Halping, on three-ten twenty-twenty, who informed him a PD had been approved. By three-thir- thirteen, two thousand and twenty, the code officer did establish that PD had not been approved, although it is, had now been listed a PD by the county properties appraiser office. Yesterday, received an email from Department Services Development Departments, Development Service Department, informing that the incorrect information given and listed by the county appraiser since two thousand and eighteen has been restored to AR. Also, some case complaints were added to the long-term case adjudicated in June and therefore they were listed as closed. After acquiring the property in two thousand and eighteen, a letter to the planner on January sixth, two thousand twenty-two stated they had purchased the property and I quote, "is in the process of cleaning up the wrongdoings and code complaints from the proper owner," end quote. In the prior six years until now, nothing has been done. The letter also stated to have an open house. To date, Mr. Gardner has not responded to our questions, requests, or suggestions since that February tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. The applicant or legal representative did not even attend the original hearing. You informed them then mail, seven days to move the trailers or pay a thousand dollars a day after that. Now the case is important to them. Maintaining the codes and zonings for this rural area has always been important to the citizens in the area, as stated in our community plan. I am concerned the representatives, as always, in previous cases, will refute, refute my statement and claim it untrue or irrelevant, since I do live close proximity to the property. I live in the unincorporated Hillsborough County and have the right privilege and responsibility to protect it. I have the recorded county documents, documentations for everything I have truthfully stated, if you need them. Essentially, every person in Hillsborough County is affected by your ruling. If this rich violator's attorneys can change or delay your ruling, every individual in the county must be allowed to come back before you to change their small violations and judgments they have against them. The citizens I have seen here, even the ones previous case that needed a translator, respect our code, code rules and have offered valid reasons why they have had to be cited, such as supply issues, and timely do what they must to be compliant. Six years of trying to get out of the violations, selling the property, requesting PDs, instead of obeying the rules, show viol-, this violator is not trustworthy or a good student of the land they have proclaimed they want to be. Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions?
I do not. Very thorough. Thank you, Ms. McCombs. Counselor? Wouldn't you like to address any of those?
Just very briefly, um, the, again, we did purchase the property, I believe in two thousand and eighteen. There were four citations in play there. We've reduced them all, there's just the one, and that is, of course, the use. So trying to remedy that is not just removing something, it is, it is this rezoning process, which takes time preparing it, getting it ready, um, and then working with staff. So that it just takes a while to get that forward. And again, as I was mentioning earlier, there's sort of two buckets. There's this code enforcement action, there's the rezoning action. I think many of the comments that you may have heard really might be more appropriate in that form as to the zoning application, not necessarily here on, on the magistrate issue. So I don't want to attack any of the comments that she made a minute ago. I just think it's not in this, in this bailiwick. Uh, and then one last point I should clarify from what I was talking about earlier, I, I had forgotten. Tico is actually, uh, I believe has signed off on our submission as, to indicate, you know, further indication that this, this issue of that easement of that property is very likely to be resolved with this new application. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, officer, in regards to compliance, if this violator removes eight, ten, two hundred trailers, whatever it is from the property, are they in compliance?
If they remove them, yes.
Okay. All right, counselor, based on the testimony and the testimony of the county, I am going to, um, deny the, the change, uh, of the prior, prior ruling from six-ten, two thousand twenty-two, order that it remain in place. Um, you have the option to remove the trailers. If you remove the trailers, you are in compliance, but as of right now, the fines will continue to run based on the previous order.
If, may I? One more comment.
Sure.
I, I'm not sure that there's a, uh, and maybe this won't affect the magistrate's decision, but I don't believe there really is a practical solution for where we can put those. Uh, you know, we have tried in good faith to, to.
Your owner owns a dealership. I was here in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, so I remember the cases from back when it was originally just going to be temporary while the construction was being done. Based on the history, that is my ruling, that this continues at a thousand dollars a day from June tenth, two thousand twenty-two. You have the ability to move them. You're operating a business. They can move them someplace else where they can be allowed until this process is complete.
Uh, might I ask you if we could, uh, uh, suspend the prior tolls from June tenth and start today? At least.
Um, for what reason?
For the toll. Uh, again, we, we were under the impression it was going to be stayed and wasn't going to be heard last month. So this, just treating today as the, as day one for the initiation of the tolls.
No, we, we properly noticed there were three people here that came and testified and no one from your firm or the owner showed up, based on the information I have. Nothing, nothing different than that, so, um, no, I'm not going to change that. We're going to remain as a six-ten, two thousand twenty-two, uh, seven days, thousand dollars per day, recheck on six-eighteen, and my understanding is it's still in violation. So I would suggest that your client move the trailers or you continue to catch a fine of a thousand dollars a day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next case, please.
Next case is on page seven, item sixteen, case number CE two-one-zero-one-four-one-eight-eight. Kevin Eon Johnson. The location is five-oh-two Hillside Court. We have service and someone is present.
Good morning, sir.
Hello.
Morning.
Raise.
Good morning.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Please state your name and address for the record. And you could pull that mic up close to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, my name is Kevin Johnson and my address is five-oh-two Hillside Court, Brandon, Florida, three-three-five-one-zero.
And do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sir Bowling?
Donald K. Bowling, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case began on ten-seven, two thousand twenty-one. There have been eight visits to the property, last being on seven-five, two thousand twenty-two, for a posting. I had contact with the respondent after the posting via telephone. The violations cited are overgrowth, accumulations, and fences. Uh, the fencing, especially in the back, uh, facing the main roadway, uh, has fallen down and needs repair. Uh, the turf is very overgrown and, um, there are accumulations. It's not really, really substantial, but a lot of it's kind of covered by the overgrowth. Uh, and the respondent called and was very eager to comply.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, good morning, sir. Uh, what I did, I was able to go stop by Cutter and Powers to pick up a lawnmower. So I was able to get the lawnmower fixed and also I was able, someone was able to fix the fence. It's not picture perfect. However, I'm still, uh, doing piece by piece, sir.
Okay.
To get, so the, for the structure is up, I just have to put some nails and just make sure it's functional.
Understand. So you understand the violations and the issues? How much time do you need to complete all three of them?
I'm a one-man gang, so I'm thinking, sir, how much would you suggest? Because I have, I just got the lawnmower yesterday and I just, yeah, need a time frame.
I love this game and I play with my kids all the time, but you tell me how much time you think you need.
I, I would say, say, it has to be like two, three weeks, two weeks.
Excellent. I'll give you thirty days.
Okay, that would be awesome.
Excellent. I think we're on the same page. Fantastic. I appreciate you working with us, just stay in touch with Officer Bowling as you go through the process and then he can come out inspected, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming down today. I appreciate it. I rule in case CE two-one-zero-one-four-one-eight-eight, the basis of this presentation, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes of awareness is listed in staff's presentation. Further base of the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant thirty days to come into compliance and compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per day be assessed. Thirty days.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next case.
Page eight, item eighteen, case number CE two-one-zero-one-four-eight-four-seven, Antonio Gutierrez and Dora Trevino. We have service. The location is forty-ten Gallagher Road. Someone is present, please come forward. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do.
Each of you state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Arisali Gutierrez, um, address forty-ten Gallagher Road, Dover, Florida, three-three-five-two-seven. And this is my father and I'm translating for him.
Let him state his name and address, please. Tu nombre y dirección.
Antonio Gutierrez, dueñas, la dirección es.
It's the same, forty-ten.
El de ahí.
Forty-ten Gallagher Road.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Officer Sweeney.
Good morning, Officer Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The county received a complaint on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one for this location concerning multiple issues, multiple families living in this dwelling. Uh, the property is on ASC one, property is not in foreclosure. Uh, a site visit was made on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Upon my arrival, I spoke with some folks that appeared to be tenants or occupants of this property. While on location, the owner, Mr. Gutierrez, uh, arrived. I started to speak with Mr. Gutierrez and found that he doesn't speak English. I called our officer Omar Cortez to translate for me, uh, while on site. Uh, Mr. Gutierrez said he was in, uh, conversation with his insurance company at the time for the repairs of the roof. Uh, insurance was kind of the hang-up at the time. Uh, also, uh, I expressed accumulation issues on the property to have, uh, items removed. Um, as a follow-up to the case, some of the items were removed. The, uh, tarp was still in place. I gave a ten-day extension from that point on, uh, to give Mr. Gutierrez, uh, opportunity for his insurance to continue to work. Uh, obviously that has failed. Uh, so that's why we're here today is the roof, uh, issues and the accumulations on the property.
Okay. Folks, what would you like to tell me?
Uh, well, my father, he hired a company. Um, we have the name Frank Car Cuevas. Uh, he's doing, he hired him just to do the, um, to change the, um, the roof. There was a, he was doing, um, my house first and then his house. So he did that. I'm not sure what's going on with him and like that's, I know that's like our private, um, deal, but like, we're not sure what's going on with him because he has received the payment, but he has not done the, um, roof change yet.
Did he do your roof?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think he's playing with, I think that's, that's what I think, because he was waiting for this check to buy the material for the other house, which I talked to him and told him that it has, like, it's two different things, right? But, um, as of right now, he said they were waiting for, um, the, the, the new material, because it has been different reasons. Um, he said it was a material first, we, my dad had ordered, um, a certain material and then, um, there was, I guess, he couldn't find the one that he was going to get. And then my dad said just to get whatever there was or whatever was coming in, because they were having issues with supply. Um, but, uh, right now I've called him twice and he still hasn't answered me back. So, um, we're just waiting on him. I know, um, the last thing, I, we did receive the money already, so he has the money. So he has to do the, um, he, he said, they already went and checked the panels, so they were, he already did that part. So I guess they already checked that the panels are working. They already know how they're going to take him out, do the repair for the roof and all the repairs and then put the panels back on.
Okay.
That's the last thing that I've spoken with him.
How much time do you think that will take to get that completed?
Cuanto tiempo crees que tarde para que él, porque le digo que tú contratasste al señor Frank, ¿verdad? Él está haciendo todo el proceso de los permisos y todo eso.
No, it's the que, más esperando por los paneles que, o sea que algo problema está, mover los paneles, la compañía que va a mover los paneles de la luz.
Okay. Cuánto tiempo crees que vaya tardar?
Well, they will, they will, pero a lo mejor, debe ser como unos quince días.
He's going to start pushing, so if we have to call every. He's going to start pushing, so if we have to call every day, we will. Um, I know there, they said there were, they've already took a look at the panels, but there were, it's, they had to get the company to get, come and get them off. So he's thinking maybe fifteen days, because we're gonna start pushing them, so. Hmm, he was asking if he could get like a, a paper to show the roofing company that they need to move faster, so that they can.
They should have received the notice of violation through the mail.
So you should have some paperwork.
They should have it.
You should have some paperwork.
Oh, I'm. By mail, I just got the letter that was in the paper and, um, and the door.
Take to the door?
Yeah, they said to come in today, so I, I.
Yeah, I did post, I did have to post the hearing at the location.
Okay. After this hearing, you'll get materials in the mail that show the violation time and the penalty, so to take, to get that completed.
Could I check on what address am I getting the mail from? Because usually I try to get, because my dad has a farming company. So I'm like his secretary, so I get all the paperwork mailed to my address.
We have to send the notice of violation to the address that is listed by the property appraiser's website, which is forty ten Gallagher Road. Is that where your father lives?
No, not right now.
That's why.
He hasn't gotten it. So I should just go to the property appraiser and change the address, for mailing address? Okay, I will.
Okay, all right. In regards to the accumulations, the materials that are on the ground, the cleanup of the accumulations.
So he had gone, uh, he had sent people to do the cleaning around, um, the property. Um, but right now, he, uh, told them to go back, so they're doing it today.
Okay.
Go back and make sure that, um, they pick up everything else.
Okay.
Make it.
I'm in the process of doing a roof myself, so fifteen days seems a little aggressive, so I'm gonna give you forty five days on the roof, and then I'll give you a week for the accumulations, so we'll offset those a little bit. So within seven days, officer will come out and verify the accumulations have been removed, and then you'll have, you'll still have forty five days in which to get the roof completed, and then Officer Sweeney will come back out. And if it's done sooner than that, you can call him and have him come out and inspect it, and you'll be done.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I rule in case CE two, one, zero, one, four, eight, four, seven. The basis of the presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance for item PM twelve point one accumulations. Uh, failure to meet that timeline results in a penalty of one hundred dollars per day. Uh, second part of the motion, item R eleven point seven point four roofs and or parts thereof, I grant forty five days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred dollars per day. Okay, you have the days. Just stay in touch with Officer Sweeney. Thank you. Next case, please.
Page ten, item twenty three, case number CE two, one, zero, one, five, eight, two, nine. Jose M. Perez Aramis and Cecilin Marleni Diaz Martinez. The location is fifty eight forty U.S. Highway ninety two east. We have service and someone is present. Please come forward.
Good morning. I'll be translating for Jose.
Okay, raise your right hand, both of you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please, each of you state your name and address for the record.
Um, my, my personal address, okay, Damaris Herrera, eighty four, zero, six North Chevrolet Avenue, apartment T one, Tampa, Florida, three, three, six, zero, four.
Sir?
My name is Jose Aramis Martinez Perez. My address is forty eight, forty, fifty eight, forty, U.S. ninety two, Placety.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Officer Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The complaint for this issue came to us on November twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Property is located at fifty eight forty U.S. Highway ninety two. Um, it's zoned commercial general, and there's no foreclosure on the property. Upon my site visit, um, along with the complainant, the owners have installed a eight foot fence around the rear perimeter of the property. And along the front side of the property, it has a solid fencing across the front. However, our codes do not allow eight foot high fencing without a variance. And the fence across the front has to be at least thirty percent opaque, so it can't be a solid wall. So those are the two concerns that we have with this property with the fencing issues.
The front elevation height is okay, it's six feet.
It is commercial.
Okay.
Uh, so the six feet, uh, is allowable in commercial zoning. However, it's gotta be opaque.
Understand. Okay. Ms. Herrera, what would you like to tell us?
Okay, um, the first reason why the fence in the back of eight foot was put up was because there was harassment with that neighbor that probably did the complaint. He was standing on the ladder cursing, and to avoid a bigger issue with him, he stole all the caps from the fence as well. Um, he would throw things over the property, so we just put a fence to avoid that issue. It can be fixed. We thought that since it was a commercial property, you know, eight foot fence was allowed. Um, he has his work trucks in the back, so he didn't want nothing to get damaged as he, as he was throwing stuff as well. The front, he thought that with the, you know, the clearing of the gate and the side that that was enough, but he can change that as well. That's not an issue. Um, and that was the main reason why he put the eight foot fence in the back.
Understand. How much time does he need to make those changes?
He needs thirty days, um, you know, to order the material and stuff and get that.
Okay. Any concerns with that, Officer Sweeney?
Oh, no, no, there's no life safety issues with this property. It's just a dispute with a neighbor.
Yeah, no.
Sorry to hear you have such an entertaining neighbor. That's.
No, um, he actually damaged the fence. He knocked down the whole eight foot fence. There is a police report on that. Um, at three AM, he didn't have nothing better to do, so he knocked down the whole fence because it bothered him. Another thing is, um, that eight foot fence is five feet inside the property. So if he was to put it on his property line, it would disturb the storage of that neighbors that keeps on complaining, and he would have to remove that whole storage. So I don't know if the inspector wants to go out and actually look through the survey and see where we actually have to put the fence, or.
Surveys are, you know, they're, they're, they're legal binding documents. Uh, if it's, if it's on the property line, uh, it's certainly cause for us to cite that individual and have him remove that building or whatever it is to meet the required setback.
Because that was the issue at the beginning. He keeps saying that it's two inches in his property, when technically, according to the survey, we are five feet in our property and his property.
That's a battle that you're gonna have to fight on your own and make a decision on, and then if, if there's an issue, you, you have the ability to call code enforcement in regards to issues for the setback for his, his property and materials. So that's something you work on, but I appreciate the thirty days, and that'll be my ruling for this. Just get it taken care of. Stay in touch with Officer Sweeney as you move forward, and, uh, we'll be good to go. All right. Thank you for coming down. I rule in case CE two, one, zero, one, five, eight, two, nine. The basis of the presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant thirty days to come into compliance, and compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred and seventy five dollars per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Page eleven, item twenty four, case number CE two, one, zero, zero, nine, two, oh, three. Lillian Zufeldt and Lawrence W. N. Zufeldt. The location is one, one, two, oh, six Mondale Avenue. We have service and someone is present. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please, each of you state your name and address for the record. You need to speak to the mic, please.
Lillian Zufeldt.
Address?
Eleven, two, zero, six Mondale Ave, South New York, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
Lawrence W. N. Zufeldt, eleven, two, oh, six Mondale Ave, South New York, Florida.
Thank you, and do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I want to speak on behalf of my mother and I. First of all, we were trying to be compliant.
No, no problems, sir. Let the officer do his thing first, and then I'll get right back to you.
That's fine, go ahead.
Officer Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case number CE twenty one, zero, zero, nine, two, oh, three. I will say there's no life safety issues at this time. Property is located at eleven, two, oh, six Mondale Avenue. The owner is Lillian and Lawrence Zufeldt. Property zoned RSC six, not in foreclosure with seven inspections to date. It was first inspected on seven, one, two thousand twenty one, and the only remaining violation is pool sanitation. My final inspection was seven, eleven, two thousand twenty two, and since the inspection, I've had correspondence with the owners where they got the pool pump, um, circuit breaker fixed, and they actually now have a pool technician servicing it, trying to address the issue, and that's all I got.
So you've had communication with the owner through the property?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. All right, folks, what would you like to tell us?
The pool is clearing up. The pool is clearing up. Um, the, the pool tech was supposed to come out once, see if I do the thunderstorm. She's behind, so she came on Thursday, shocked there. And I've been around the pool twenty four, seven, since then.
And cleaning the filter out as well, yeah?
Cleaning the filter out every day, so from Friday on till today. I haven't done it today, but I will do it when I get home.
Okay.
But I'm, from Friday on, I was cleaning the filter every day, and it is starting to clear up right now. You can see, if you look on the right end, the top step and the middle second step, if you look to the right, you can see it, and you haven't been able to see it to this point before this.
Hmm.
So there is improvement, and she'll be here tomorrow to shock you if she's on the schedule.
Okay, and i- is the gate in?
I don't have a gate. What I have is a lanai. I have a fence around it. What happened was the fence was rotten. We took the fence out, and the neighbor's put a section behind our property, and then along the side, there's, there's no gate and fence on the front, but there is lanai, and I keep it locked now.
Okay, so your, your screen porch is intact, correct?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay.
He checked it.
Okay. Um, I, I always have a concern, pool sanitation is a life safety issue, obviously.
And we're working on it.
Needs to be clear, or it needs to be drained, so.
What happened, sir, what happened, sir, was the pool pump messed up through the breaker, and we didn't realize it.
Gotcha.
And she was shocking it and cleaning it, but if the pool isn't circulating, you rinse the pool further, you're not gonna clean it.
Right, understand.
And that's where the problem is. I got the, uh, uh, breaker fixed last Wednesday. She was supposed to be here last Wednesday, but she came on Thursday due to rain and all that. Sometimes she's there too late, but who cares about that? She does her job.
Understand. So you think in the next three days, do you think that'll be clear enough to be able to be able to see the bottom?
Give me a week just to be safe.
I can't do that. I can't. No, it's a life safety issue, but I'll, how about I'll meet you in the middle? How about five days?
They'll work.
And then we'll have the officer come back out and check.
Have a shocker tomorrow. I have a shocker tomorrow, shows up tomorrow, and let's keep rinsing the filter and keep running it, and that's it.
That's it, keep doing it and keep cleaning the filter and.
But it's cleaned up so far from Thursday till now. Five days.
You're gonna be good, sir. Absolutely. Okay, that's what I'll do.
Okay, five days.
Five days. Thank you very much. I rule in case CE two, one, zero, zero, nine, two, zero, three. The basis of the presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant five days for coming to compliance for item S thirteen point five pool sanitation. Compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred dollars per day be assessed. Thank you, officer. Next case, please.
Next case is on page twelve, item twenty six, case number CE two, one, zero, one, two, seven, two, nine, Tea Time LLC. The location is seventy one hundred Williams Road. We have service and someone is present. So raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Dion. I'm from Johnson Pope, four ninety first Avenue, South East Saint Petersburg, Florida.
And do you recognize that photo as the property?
That looks to be the property, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor, I mean, officer?
Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case number CE twenty one, oh, one, two, seven, two, nine. No life safety issues. Property is located at seventy one hundred Williams Road and owned by Tea Time LLC. It's zoned ASC one, not in foreclosure. There's been seventeen inspections to date, and the property was first inspected on nine, nine, two thousand twenty one. The violations are outside open storage, improper use of zone, accessory use without a primary. I have had contact with the owner, and my last inspection was seven, eleven, two thousand twenty two.
Any change in the seventeen visits?
They have moved some of the Jersey barriers. Um, the property told me, or excuse me, the property owner told me last week they're in the process of moving more. Um, and that's pretty much what you got there now. They're not Jersey barriers. They're like metal fencing for like the I four construction.
And the accessory use without primary?
Basically, they're storing stuff on there and, you know.
Okay, so a removal of all materials on the property would put them in compliance. Okay. Counselor, what would you like to add?
Um, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, first and foremost, and this just happened about five minutes ago, I got a text from my office with some updated pictures of the site. Um, I can show them, Officer Mason, or yourself.
Is it on your phone?
It is, and I would like to.
You know how that works.
I do, but I would like to move into record at some point. Um, I would also like to put forward that our client is actively moving material off the property. It, it's, it takes time. There are large barriers that need special equipment to lift them, to move them, to get them to, um, where they need to be. Um, right now, there's really two directions we're trying to go in. The first one is moving the items or as many items from the property as possible and as quickly as possible. The second option is that we are currently in the process of trying to get a use change. Um, that was applied for in January of this year, um, shortly after the initial violation. Um, we have been working diligently with planning commission to try to find a use that will allow us to have those, um, that storage on this ten acre site, which a- as we all know, there's not a lot of that in Hillsborough County right now. There's not a lot of space where there is storage for Jersey barriers, fencing, items of this size and this quantity. Um, we're looking outside the county to have a possible place to move them. Um, the client uses them for a multitude of, um, infrastructure and help for the county itself. Um, they've done it for the Super Bowl. They've done it for I pick I four repair, and we're looking for a place, we're looking for a way to have these, um, barriers and these items work to, to comply. Um, I do also want to mention the three separate violations. Um, one's outside open storage, one's improper use of a zone, and the third one is accessory use without primary use. Um, they're all based off the same thing. They're all based on one issue, which is these items being stored on the property inside of a use that is not currently allowable. Uh, my client's initial understanding of the matter was that, um, the agricultural, um, use, zoned use has storage capabilities, which, um, they now know is a little bit different than what their initial thought process was as far as what that use is, which was that you're allowed to have open onsite storage if it's an accessory use to an agricultural use. Um.
That's a stretch for Jersey barriers, I suppose.
I, I agree, but initially, my client believed that storage was storage, not agricultural. Exactly.
Understand.
So once, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. I was just gonna ask, what do you, obviously, you're in the process of moving things to a different location. What's the reasonable amount of time to get that completed so that you're in compliance?
We're still juggling the two kind of competing, um, options. Option one being removal of all items from the property, and option two, getting to be within the use. Um, we believe that giving us a hundred and twenty days to get the use figured out, um, we have a hearing tentatively scheduled for October, um, to be in front of the planning commission, and then, um, in front of the board, I think it's two weeks thereafter, um, which we'll have a pretty good understanding of where we stand as far as being able to have that use in place.
And what's your option if you don't? How long is it gonna take you to remove all the materials that's on the site?
Um, we try to do it in an economical way, which usually means moving them to a place that they will be actually used, um, which, you know, was along the highway, along, you know, whatever sort of need is there. Um, if it needs to be expedited, we can figure out a way to do that, but we would like the time to be able to try to do it in an economical way. This is a very expensive procedure, moving things from place A to place B. This is a very expensive procedure, moving things from place A to place B. Um, so my client's trying to do it in a way that that makes sense.
Officer, impact to the neighbor's location? Where are we? What's, what's the?
It's off of Williams Road. There's not a lot of houses around it. Um, it's pretty rural. It's just an eyesore and somebody doesn't like it in the neighborhood.
Understand.
There's a pink farm to the north of it. Um, there is also along Williams Road. There is brush and overgrowth and, uh, trees that are there that, that block most of the site. Um, there's a drive in and out where is really where you can see most of the, get the visual of what's there.
Mr. Passano, was it?
It's Terry Converse.
Yes.
Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. So the, the case initiated actually by a neighbor who complained about the volume of heavy equipment going in and out of the property. So that's how the case came to be originally. Um, so there is a concern about the traffic or the volume of heavy equipment going up and down Williams Road and coming in and out of the property. So, uh, the question that you asked about the, the traffic impact, that is where the complaint initiated.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, counselor, I'm hesitant to do the hundred and twenty days. Um, if I do a hundred and twenty days, there will be a significant fine attached to it. So that pending approval or not approval, you'll have a very short timeline for which to get things removed or your fines will incur. I'm not gonna continue it for a hundred and twenty days, but I'm willing to give you a hundred and twenty days with a significant daily fine, if that's what you'd like to do. Otherwise, I can give you a timeline shorter than that to remove the, from the property.
Could we do a ninety day continuance?
To do, I don't see anything changing in ninety days if your meeting is in October with the board.
So ninety days brings us to the end of October. Um.
Mid-October, but yes.
Mid-October. Um, well, at least I believe. Let me check my notes for our tentative date. I have it here. It just says October on the email.
Right, so a hundred days will put you back here. A hundred and twenty days will put you back here. Well, a little shy of that. You'll be back for the November eighth board meeting, or November, November eighth meeting. So that would be just shy of a hundred and twenty days. So, um, if your meeting's in October, um, you, you want to play both sides. I'm okay with that. You want to hedge your bets one way or another, that's fine. I'd be happy to do a hundred and twenty days. Or I can do a shorter timeline and you can remove them. It's your choice.
Um, I'd rather have the shorter timeline to continue if we can do it that way.
No, I'm not gonna continue because it's before the meeting of the board and there's nothing's gonna change. You're gonna come back. Nothing will have changed and we'll have another discussion about the board meeting next month. So I'm, I'm being, just being open and showing my cards here. I could just make a ruling. I'm giving you an opportunity here. If you want the hundred and twenty days, I'm happy to do that. Just, I'm just want you to understand there'll be a significant penalty if you don't meet that.
Once it tolls past a hundred and twenty days.
Correct. All these folks are standing on edge.
I know. This is, this is wild. Uh.
Wild. Or I can just rule.
I, I understood. I'm trying, I'm just trying to map it out in my head. Once we get to the hundred and twenty days, um, can we, that won't work. Um, we'll, we'll do a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. And then if you have an issue, you know, if it's approved by the county in which that time frame happens and you have a different direction, then obviously keep code enforcement in play and that violation doesn't exist anymore. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Absolutely. I rule in case CE two one zero one two seven two nine, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes and ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant one hundred and twenty days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that, by that date, a fine of one thousand dollars per day be assessed. One twenty, one thousand per day. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Next case, please.
Next case is item twenty-seven. Case number CE two one zero one three zero nine eight, Independence Developers LLC, location fifty-three fifty Murray Street. We have service and we have people present. And we also have someone that's virtual. Can I get that person online?
Any ears? Tony, go ahead and start your video for us, please.
Can what's that? Video?
Yes, your camera.
Yeah, can you see me now?
No.
You can't?
No, we cannot. Just press that start video button.
It's supposed to.
On the Webex app. The bottom of your screen.
Start video. Here we go.
There you go.
That worked?
Yes. Now, can you raise your right hand and, and can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, um. Mr. Wrigley, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tony Ringly. My address is five three zero two Murhe. It's M U R R H E E Street, Steffner, Florida, three three five eight four.
And your relationship to this case?
Um, I have, um, I don't really know the relationship. I have stuff on the property, uh, belonging to me.
Okay. Each of you come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good morning. Jessica Isterman. I'm an attorney for the owner of the property. Um, my address is four oh one East Jackson Street, Suite twenty-one hundred. And with me today is the property owner.
Sir, come forward.
Nicholas Lapore, four five four A Belfort Road, Monroe, New Jersey.
And do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Officer?
Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case CE two one zero zero, oh, excuse me, two one zero one three zero nine eight. There's no life safety issues. Property is located at fifty-three fifty Murray Street and owned by Independence Developers LLC. Property's vacant, zoned RMC nine, it's not in foreclosure, with fifteen inspections to date. The property was first inspected on zero nine ten two thousand twenty-one. The violations are outside open storage, accumulations, assess it, accessory without primary use, inoperable vehicles, vehicle repairs, and a residential district. I've talked with the owner on a few occasions and my final inspection was seven eleven two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, folks, go ahead. What would you like to tell me?
Good morning. Again, this is Nick Lapore. He is a representative of the property owner, Independence Developers LLC. Again, this property is a vacant piece of property. Um, as you'll see, however, in the photos, that there are inoperable vehicles and accumulations on the property. Um, you may have picked up on the, the person, Mr. Ringly, who is appearing virtually. He is the neighbor of this property and those items do belong to him. Um, and I believe you will hear from him later. Um, we are asking for a continuance for thirty days and I believe staff will not object. Again, this is not a life safety issue. And here's why. Um, I was retained last week, so I'm now working towards compliance with the owner. Um, we have drafted and sent today a demand letter requiring the removal of the illegal items. Um, and if those items are not removed by July twenty-eighth, we intend to take legal action. Um, the, in addition to that reason, the property owner has actually twice tried to remove these illegal items, but was met with resistance by the neighbor. Um, um, both times a tow truck appeared at the property, prepared to remove the vehicles, and the neighbor stopped that action. However, yesterday, the property owner actually made contact with Mr. Ringly and, uh, Mr. Ringly has graciously agreed to remove the items voluntarily, which we are hoping and expecting he will do. Um, all in all, we're requesting this thirty day decontinuance to allow the neighbor to remove those items by our July twenty-eighth deadline. And if he does not, then we will.
Your network connection is poor. Allow, allow anybody's?
Is that Mr. Ringly? Okay, Mr. Ringly, we're gonna hold your testimony for a minute and let this young lady finish, okay?
No, my camera went off. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll get right back to you, counselor.
So the thirty day continuance will allow the neighbor to remove the items. Um, and if not, that still gives us enough time to remove the items ourselves within that thirty days. Um, I think a continuance is important here because the neighbor does have a history of placing items on the property without the owner's consent. Back in twenty eighteen, we had to remove, um, a set of vehicles as a result of a code enforcement violation. Um, and basically, in the interest of equity, we believe a continuance is important so that we can avoid any repeat violations. And this is not the cause of the property owner. This is the, the neighbor taking advantage of an adjacent vacant lot.
So the neighbor is not a tenant, does not lease the space. He's just parking vehicles on your property without your permission.
That's correct.
So you have the right to remove them from the property.
Exactly. We, and we have tried, however, most recently, two weeks ago, however, the neighbor has physically, um, resisted the tow truck company from entering and the tow truck company, uh, would not engage with obviously any physical altercations.
You have a plan for that within the next thirty days, is what you're saying?
We do. We, we intend to coordinate with the sheriff's office, with the tow truck, and also file a lawsuit to seek damages and injunction to prevent this from happening again.
Okay, well, it sounds like you, you're, the gentleman that's parking there, Mr. Ringly, might be cooperative. So let's hear from him.
We hope so. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ringly, it's your turn. What would you like to say, sir?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hello? Okay, all right. Um, about the vehicles that were removed on the property that was towed away, they were part, um, someone parked them. They had nothing to do with any of us. Um, that was somebody, uh, we don't know if they stole the vehicles or what they were. They parked them there and we were the ones who asked to have them removed because we didn't know who they belonged to. So that had nothing to do with me or, or any of that stuff. The vehicles that are on, on the property are being removed. Uh, most of them are drivable. Um, I do own them. Um, I drive the, the blue van, as you see. That's my, uh, it's a van I use for whatever I need to, to help use my, pull my trailer or whatever. Um, it's, it just parks here. We believed we owned that property, part of it. Um, we didn't know that we didn't own it up until about a month ago, a month and a half ago, maybe, when the code enforcement showed us where our actually property line in the, in was and everything, because we were the, under the impression we had an acre of property. We didn't know that it was only a half acre. Our, when my grandfather and my grandmother died, that was their deal. We didn't know it. Um, I'm the grand, grandkid, so, um, my mom inherited the property. We were under the impression that that half acre belonged to us. Now that we know it doesn't, we are removing it. I've talked to the owner yesterday and I told him I apologize. Every time the tow truck came here, he was saying, remove it off of the property that we believed we owned. Okay, so we didn't know that it, we were under a misimpression. Basically, we didn't understand that that wasn't our property. That's why we parked vehicles there, because it was our property is what we knew.
Mr. Ringly, how much time do you need to remove your vehicles from someone else's property?
Well, that's what I'm doing. Uh, I moved two of the, two of the vehicles yesterday, the, the trailers yesterday that had the vehicles on them. I moved two of them, but, um, I, I, I work too, so I'm saying two vehicles a day is what I'm moving out of here so far. I have a place that I'm moving them to. So, um, if no more than thirty days, I mean, I, I, I won't take that long, but give me thirty days just so the owners and everything know it'll be done and it'll be done.
Okay, I'm going to give the owners forty-five days. I'm not giving you any time. That's between you
Give me like thirty days.
And the owner of the property. So, you understand, sir?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I rule it'll be for forty-five days. I'll give you time to go through the process, get that completed. Should have a two-week window in case something goes sideways and then fines will incur, but then you'll have a, the penalty, obviously, that you can move forward with against the violator that's putting vehicles without permission on your property.
So it's forty-five days to come into compliance as opposed to a thirty-day continuance?
That is correct.
So, so you understand where I'm coming from? I am, uh, of, what I'm trying to prevent is repeat violation fines from incurring immediately as a result of the neighbor doing a bad action again within the next five years at no, you know, consent of our, the property owner.
Understand.
A continuance would allow us to avoid that situation.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I rule in case CE two one zero one three zero nine eight, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the action taken by violator and the violator's history, I grant forty-five days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of fifty dollars per day be assessed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case is on page thirteen, item twenty-eight, case number CE two one zero one four zero nine five, Taylor Road Properties LLC. The location is one 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 zero Robbins Lance Lane. We have service and someone is present. Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Michael L. Jones, thirty-one thirty-four North Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero three.
And what is your relationship to this case?
I'm the attorney for the property owner.
Thank you. Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Actually, no, but I take the officer's word for it.
Thank you.
Officer?
Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case number CE twenty-one zero one four zero nine five. No life safety issues. The property is located at one 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 zero Robbins Lance Lane, owned by Taylor Road Properties LLC. Zoned RSC dash two, not in foreclosure, with eleven inspections to date. The property was first inspected on October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and it had three violations. The violations were recreation vehicles and recreation vehicle slash utility traders, trailers exceed the allowable number. As you can see, that's the remnants of the recreation vehicle that was exceeding the number. So now it's just the pile of accumulations, which was the third violation. The pile goes away.
We transformed a, an, a recreational vehicle into a pile of debris. And now it's been left.
Yes.
Okay. All right, counselor, what would you like to tell me? Uh, I think I know the answer to that, but.
Yes, Mr. Magistrate, thank you so much for the opportunity to respond. And you're probably right. You probably can't anticipate my response. So my client is, is not exactly an absentee owner, but he's not hands-on either. He had a property manager. Um, without getting into too much detail, that relationship ended. And he was under the impression, he was surprised to hear from me that this was not gone. So, uh, we, we desire to be in compliance. We're not disputing anything. We need time. I didn't realize the piles were this big. Um, we spoke this morning. The, the officer was very gracious in, in communicating with me. And now that I see how much work is involved, knowing that he has a new transitional property manager and probably needs new subcontractors, that sort of thing to get this done. I'm not saying that's an insurmountable task or trying to make more out of it than it is. But I'm, I'm gonna ask for forty-five days. I don't know if the magistrate's inclined to agree with that.
You've had a long time today based on my, my tardiness, so I'm trying to be pretty flexible with folks today. So forty-five days I can handle.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good luck getting that cleaned up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. I rule in case CE two one zero one four zero nine five, based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes and ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant forty-five days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred dollars per day be assessed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day. Next case, please.
Next case is item twenty-nine, case number CE two one zero one four three six three, Michael W. Corsiglia. The location is ninety-six oh one Ripley Road. We have service and someone is present virtually. Do I have a Trish Corsiglia?
Yes, you do.
Ma'am, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Trish Corsiglia, ninety-six oh one Ripley Road, the Nona Sasa, Florida, three three five nine two.
And what is your relationship to this case?
I am his wife, Michael Corsiglia's wife.
Okay.
Officer?
Wait, do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Officer?
Chris Madison, again with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, CE twenty-one oh one four three six three. There's a pool sanitation issue. It's fenced in and very difficult to see, so I would say there's no life safety issues to maybe there is. It's your call. Pool doesn't have a fence around the yard and it's located at ninety-six oh one Ripley Road and owned by Mr. Corsiglia. Property's owned AS one, not in foreclosure, with twelve inspections to date, with the first one being October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The violations are acc. The violations are accumulations and pool sanitation. I have had contact with the owner as recently as seven eleven on my final inspection of this year.
The pool sanitation has been an issue since October of two thousand twenty-one?
Yes.
Nine, nine months?
Yes.
Okay. Ma'am, what would you like to tell me?
I am a full-time caregiver. My husband, my husband is the one that was taking care of the pool. He had a stroke ten years, ten years. I let the pool go. The pump busted on me. I financially do not have the money to have the pool fixed. I do have two estimates. I'm waiting for the guy to give me another estimate today. He just showed up as I was on the phone with you guys. I'm trying to get the money. It's just hard with me being full-time caregiver. My truck broke down with the debris and stuff. I'm not able to get that pulled out of here. I'm trying the best I can. I don't have the money to have the pool filled in or anything like that.
Understand, ma'am. You have the option to drain the pool. Can you drain the pool?
I have a pump that I can borrow to drain it, but the problem is on that is that it's a fiberglass pool. And I know with all the rain, it's going to pop out of the ground.
Unfortunately, regardless of the fencing around it, it is a life safety issue. It's been in place now for nine months. I'm thankful that nothing's happened in, in the interim. I can give you some time on the accumulations to get the materials cleaned up around the property, but the, the pool sanitation has got to be taken place relatively quickly. So I'm going to give you a short timeline to do that. Either have somebody shock the pool or it's just got to be clear enough to be able to see, or it's got to be drained enough to be able to, you know, not pop out, but, you know, be able to see someone that's in it.
Right, right. I understand.
Okay. I'll give you, I'll, I'll give you five days on the pool and I'll give you six, forty-five or sixty days on the property accumulations. Does that work?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, ma'am, for coming online. I appreciate the time. I rule in case CE, bye-bye. I rule in case CE two one zero one four three six three, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordnance's listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant forty-five days to come into compliance for item PM twelve point one accumulations. Failure to meet that timeline results in a daily fine of one hundred dollars per day. And for the item S thirteen point five pool sanitation, five days, one hundred dollars per day. Thank you. Next case, please.
Next case is on page fifteen, item thirty-three, case number CE two one zero one three five three one, Lawrence Sanders. We have service and someone is present. The location is three sixteen North Hilltop Road. Someone come forward, please. Hello, good morning. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Lawrence Sanders, three sixteen North Hilltop Road, Brandon, Florida, three, three, five, one, oh.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated September twenty-first of last year. It's owner occupied. It's not in foreclosure. The zoning is RSC six, and there's no life safety issues. This property is located on the corner of Wick, was it Wicklow?
Wicklow.
And North Hilltop Road. The, there were six violations initially cited. There's only two remaining. One being accumulations. You can see there is a couch and some other items on the other side of that fence. And then on the front porch, there's a tire and a bucket of things. So I, I spoke to the, the property owner the other day on the sixth. There's also improper use of zone. They have, he's operating a business there, which he is allowed to operate a home-based business. As you can see, it was night and day, limos and car transportation LLC. The issue is the parking of his vehicles. When the case initially started, there was a large white truck, similar to that black one, just a little smaller, that was parked along Hilltop Road. And it was preventing the view of northbound traffic when you were exiting Wicklow. Now, he's parking his limos on the property as well. Now, the way the code is written, you know, businesses shall not generate a need for parking that exceeds the volume expected at a similar residence where no business is conducted. And vehicles and trailers used in conjunction with the business must be parked in legal parking spaces that are not located within the street right of way, on or over sidewalks or on any unimproved surfaces on the residential structure. Now, I didn't cite the property for commercial vehicles. They're large. They're designed to carry for commercial purposes, but I just went with the improper use of zone. And the, the vehicles come and go off the property, you know, so. But the issue is the parking of these vehicles on the property and around in the right of way.
Okay, Mr. Sanders, what would you like to add?
Uh, I appreciate him saying some things that I didn't think he was going to say.
He's pretty good about that.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Now, I didn't know about the, the tire and the thing on the porch. I'll, I'll adjust that. Everything else has been removed. Now, I've been there sixteen years. I haven't really had any problem out of my neighbors and stuff. I got a new neighbor now, so he, and, and the problem came because one of my buddies had a van parked by the road by my house. And when he come out, he probably couldn't see good, so he reported it. And then that girl, that girl, everybody...
Bring your new neighbor a pound cake or something?
We had talked. I've been, he gave me mangoes off his tree. We talked. I thought we had a good relationship coming in. I went and met him and stuff and...
Mangoes, that would do it, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I, I've been there sixteen years. I went ahead and problem out none of my neighbors. So I always move things in and out now. I, but all the COVID and all the stuff going, businesses down, nobody's making money, companies going out of business. So I had a hard time trying to find places to put them, because storage space is packed too. So I've been fighting and fighting and fighting places. So I went and moved everything. Okay, I had the two that was in my driveway. You couldn't see unless you just looked down my driveway. They weren't in the way, but these other two here, because I had, they were kind of sticking out a little bit, but I had nowhere to put them. I've been trying to find places to put them. So I finally just kept drudging and drudging until I found some. So I, I feel them within, in, in, in appearance now. I was wondering if I was still able to keep those two back in since you can't see them from the road. I moved all the rest of the stuff. And if I could be able to do that, it'll take a little pressure from all the storage bills I got to pay for the stuff that I had to do.
Well, I heard the officer read the code, so we'll ask him to verify what can be allowed and not allowed. My understanding is as long as it's in the, yeah, driveway?
It's also considered a commercial vehicle, which I didn't cite, right? It's designed or altered. I think, I might be stand corrected. I mean, if, can that carry a ton? I mean, how many people can be in a limousine? That's the issue. It's going to be a weight.
That makes it a commercial vehicle.
It's going to be a weight thing.
Weight, weight issue.
So I'm going to defer to supervisors.
So you're permitted, Terry Converse, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, you're permitted to have a home-based business by Florida law and by county ordinance now. The, the restriction is the volume of vehicles, number one, and commercial vehicles on the property if it's not zoned for commercial vehicles. And the, the van or the bus obviously fits a category of a, of a, the definition of a, of a commercial vehicle. And technically, if it's a stretched limousine, it would fit that. If it's a standard automobile, obviously, it doesn't meet that criteria, even though it's being used for commercial purposes. So finding a different location for the commercial vehicles is going to be required, but you can operate the business out of the residence. As long as you don't have a lot of employees coming there and parking all over and things like that.
I, I, the van and the, and the, and the bus is already gone. I was just concerned about the two limos.
No, they can be there.
I can't keep them. Okay.
Yep.
Now, the reason I was saying that is since I be riding around, I start looking places to see who else is in, in, not in compliance. I'm right in my neighborhood. I go down the street and turn on, on sixty.
So you want your neighbor to be nice to you. You didn't bring him a pound cake and now you're looking for other people to find...
No, but I'm saying, I just start looking. I said, well, why am I just being picked on when I see other people in my neighborhood that's got the same...
I definitely can answer that for you, sir. If there are other people in your neighborhood that you have concerns about, you are more than welcome to go online, onto the website and report that as a case and that will be inspected. I can't do anything about other cases till they come up. So if that's a concern for you, you're more than welcome to report them. So don't feel that you're being targeted. I don't think that's the case.
I did, because I start looking at that. I start getting my paperwork. I start wondering why these other people don't have this stuff going.
But I would start with the pound cake for sure. I'm sure somebody in your house makes a nice pound cake. You can do that?
I can do it.
Okay, excellent.
So where we at now?
So basically, you're saying that you're in compliance. You've moved the bus and everything.
That taddy toy, everything's on the...
The smaller vehicles can remain at your property, so...
The small ones at my property. The big ones have taken everything off.
Fantastic. So I'll just do a short timeline to have the officer come back out and check to make sure that's taken place?
Yeah.
And then we're, we're in good shape. Just keep it that way.
All right.
Excellent, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I'm going to take this list and I'm going to find that website and put them on there.
Yes, sir. Thanks for keeping me dutifully employed. I appreciate it. I rule in case CE two one zero one three five three one, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordnance's listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Next case is item thirty-four, case number CE two one zero one four three two four, estate of Jasev, Joseph Raymond Hutchinson. Location four oh eight West Win Horse Road. We have service and someone is present. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Melinda Hutchinson, four oh eight West Win Horse Road, Brandon, Florida, three, three, five, one, zero.
And what is your relationship to this case?
I am, I inherit the property from my father-in-law.
Do you recognize that photo as the property? Thank you.
Officer?
Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated October twelfth of last year. It's owner occupied, not in foreclosure. The zoning is ASC one, and there's no life safety issues. There's initially three violations on the case, but there's only two remaining. Inoperable vehicles and outside open storage. You had the, as you can see there, all those items in that shed. I spoke to the, I spoke to her twice over the course of this case via phone. Met her for the first time out there. She has since showed me photographs that they're all in compliant, compliance, with the exception of the one white truck, and we, we spoke about that. As you'll see, the two vehicles are not registered. The white truck is still on the property based on the photos she recently showed me.
Okay, ma'am. Sounds like you're well on your way to getting this taken care of. How much time do you need to get the, the last vehicle?
I'm having a mechanic work on the white truck and he's starting out today.
Okay.
So I was, within thirty days.
Okay. And you have the ability to get it tagged, properly tagged and all that?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to do that this week.
Within the three days as well?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. It was the easiest one of the day. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
I rule in case CE two one zero one four three two four, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordnance's listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant thirty days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Page sixteen, item thirty-five, case number CE two one zero one five three five four, Christopher L. Sweeney, location twenty-eight oh four Williams Road. We have service and someone is present. Sir, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Christopher L. Sweeney, one one oh five Estate Way Drive, Brandon, Florida, three, three, five, one, zero.
And do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Officer?
Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated November ninth of last year. It's owner, it's tenant occupied, per the property owner's website. Not in foreclosure. The zoning is ASC one. There's no life safety issues. The initial complaint, there was an RV right where that trash is at that was hooked up to utilities and lived in. It has since been moved, but the violations remaining is outside open storage, accumulations, overgrowth, and recreational vehicles. As you can see, there's overgrowth behind the house between the fence and then, and that photo, the, there is the RV that's connected up. You could see the water. There's what I spoke about. We get back to the RV. You can see the extensions are out. I haven't been on the property, so I'm only be able to take photographs from the fence. The gate's always secured. There is a, a driveway to an adjacent property behind it, so going down that driveway, been able to take photographs. As you can see, the RV has been moved over there and it is still hooked up. It appears to be lived in. There's trucks, you know, the trucks in front, but I haven't confirmed that. All I know is, is connected to utilities.
Understand. Sir, what would you like to add?
Well, I have pictures where I cleaned, I cleaned up the front area. The RV is all closed up and locked up. The gate, the degree behind the house is all taken care of, so I have pictures I'd like to show you.
Okay, can you leave those with us?
Yes.
Fantastic. Young lady will come get them for you. And does that mean at this time you believe that you are in compliance or do you still have work to do?
I believe so. I am. And even had the neighbor that was in, where the fence was really, that, that fence is all cleaned up and then the other fence behind, behind the house, they actually cleaned their side too.
I see that. Excellent.
So all that's cleaned up, all the way down the sideline.
Okay, so I can give you a short timeline to have the officer come back out and verify that you're all good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fantastic. We will do that. Thank you for the pictures and thank you for coming down today. I appreciate it. I rule in case CE two one zero one five three five four, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordnance's listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, grant seven days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed. So just stay in touch with the officer. He'll come out within the next week and comply that and you're good to go. Thank you. Next case, please.
Page seventeen, item thirty-eight, case number CE two one zero one five five seven eight, Thomas Sackleton. The location is two oh one Matthews Avenue. We have service and someone is present. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Sackleton, two oh one Matthews, Sefner, Florida, three, three, five, eight, four.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
That is.
Thank you.
Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated on November sixteenth of last year. We're going to do three cases in a row. All these properties are joined each other. He's the property owner. So the violations for this property remaining, there were several violations cited, but it's just accumulations and outside open storage. You can see there, if we go back where the photos at, or I'm sorry, where the property is, and then to the top right corner, the other two properties. That's the entrance to this property. That home was built in nineteen oh one or something, right?
That one was built in nineteen forty.
Yes, it's an old house. But I, I was just there on the thirteenth. He, he took me around the entire property, guided tour, best tour I've ever had. So we went through and, and I pointed out everything that needed to be done and I'm confident it's probably done by now.
Okay, all right. Sir, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir. I cleaned, I cleaned up pretty much everything that, that we had talked about and, you know, I mean, I've done everything that I can. So, I mean, I don't know. I just want him to come back out there and, and get this over with if, if I can.
I can make that happen.
Please.
Absolutely. I rule in case CE two one zero one five five seven eight, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordnance's, as listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed.
What violations are on here? Because...
I thought the outside open storage...
It's the outside open storage?
And accumulations. They have a line. They're active, correct?
Oh, I'm stand corrected. It's just outside open storage.
Oh, okay.
I stand corrected. Sorry.
All right.
Okay.
Revised for just item Z two zero three, outside open storage. Everything else is complied.
And what was that? I'm sorry, seven days?
One hundred dollars per day.
Maybe you can come over Monday?
Okay, the next case is on page eighteen, item thirty-nine, case number CE two one zero one five five seven nine, Thomas Sackleton. The address is two oh three Matthews Avenue. We have service and Mr. Sackleton is here. Just state your name and address for the record again, please.
Thomas Sackleton, two oh one Matthews, Sefner, Florida, three, three, five, eight, four.
And do you recognize the photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated on November sixteenth of last year. It's tenant occupied, not in foreclosure. The zoning is RSC four, and there's no life safety issues. The violations for this property are accumulations, an accessory structure setback. For all three properties, there is a code compliance case, and the property owner's been working with code compliance to reduce the size of buildings and remove buildings that straddled property lines. You can't even tell what property you're on when you're on this property. But I, again, took a guided tour, and these guys were working while I was there, and they are, uh, probably in compliance. I pointed out everything that needed to be done.
Okay. Sir, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Same as the previous?
I just wanna get done with the hair.
Come out, take a tour. Take another tour.
Please, sir.
Okay, all right. I rule in case CE two one zero one five five seven nine that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance and compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $100 per day be assessed.
That house was a hundred and twenty years old.
Wow, that's amazing. Next case.
Next case is item forty, case number CE two one zero one five five eight zero, Thomas Sackelson, location sixteen oh five Lena Avenue. We have service and Mr. Sackelson is present. Again, just state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Sackelson, two oh one Matthews, Sefter, Florida, three three five eight four.
And do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, ma'am. That house is a hundred and two years old.
Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated November sixteenth of last year. It's tenant occupied, not in foreclosure. The zoning is RSC four, and there's no life safety issues. The only violation for this property is outside open storage. This one has a, uh, an NCU. He's actually got, he's allowed three homes on this little lot, as well as a mobile home, but once the mobile home was removed, it cannot be reinstalled. But that's why you see so many houses on this property.
Okay. Situation's the same, I'm assuming, sir?
Same thing. I'm ready for him to come out and please look at it.
Okay. I rule in case CE two one zero one five five eight zero that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances as listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance and compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $100 per day be assessed. Excellent. Just stay in touch with the officer. Thank you for taking the time.
Monday at nine o'clock.
Next case, please.
Oh, the first one, didn't I came late, right? Okay, we're going back to page one, item two, case number CE two zero two two zero zero seven three seven seven, Rest Park Bungalow Oaks LLC. The location is sixty one oh eight Martha Drive. We have service and someone is present. Is there Ashley and Eddie?
They're on their way.
Oh, they're on their way. I'm sorry. The podium just kind of blocks me.
I understand.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Each of you, please state your name and address for the record.
Ashley, one three four one eight Dottie Drive, Tampa, Florida, three three six one seven.
What's the last name, please?
Lacone.
Sir?
Addie Boothby, uh, one three four eight Dottie Drive.
And what is your relationship to this case?
I'm the community director, and Eddie's the service director.
Okay, do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Officer Ippolito Padilla, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case was initiated by a tenant complainer. Um, the address is sixty one oh eight Martha Drive. Case CE two twenty two hundred seventy three seven seven. Um, the nature of the complaint was, um, the tenant informed me that he made his head shut off the water, and it had been off for about ten days at that point. There was some other stuff associated with the water being turned off, as I cited, plumbing leaks, connection to the drain, sink-based cabinets, and interior surfaces. Since that time, uh, what I did, I issued a combo notice, which was a notice of, uh, violation notice hearing, which gave them a fixed date by six twenty eight. Then another inspection prior to that, which was on six twenty two. Um, at that time, the violations were still not, um, fixed. When I came back out on the twenty ninth, they still were not fixed. Now, that's why they are here today. Um, since that time, though, the tenant has moved out. He's not there. He was relocated.
Okay.
Um, but the violations remain. Uh, I received an email from, I believe, Ms. Lacone indicating that that particular unit was not gonna be serviced, which means they're not gonna put tenants in there. However, that could be the case, but the violations still remain. It doesn't go away until they fix it. So that's why we're here today.
Okay. All right, folks, what would you like to tell me?
So, um, the community is under a mass renovation, and this unit has been fed to our general contractor, and it is not in a position for a resident to occupy it, or it's just not, it's still inhabitable.
I would agree.
Um, so the resident has been rehoused. Um, it is tranch, so it has been given to the general contractor, and, um, that's where we are with it today. Um, I want to say that the unit should be fully restored and move in ready for a tenant probably by the end of next month. Um, if not a little bit sooner, but that's where we are with it.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, sir? She did a great job. I'm just.
I had just come on board to that property at that time, so.
Understand.
Just to their credit, I have been working diligently with.
Communication has been good?
Yeah, we've been talking.
Okay. All right. Well, I would say, right now, I'm, as, I will make a motion to maintain that it stays vacant, um, during the entire timeline of my order. Until such time as the repairs have been completed. Um, so I'll give you ninety days to get that completed, because I know general contractors are challenged a little bit these days. Uh, to get that completed, then I'll get a fine associated with that. But just stay in touch with the officer as you go through the process, and like I said, I'll just, part of my order will be that the remains vacant until the repairs have been completed. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. I rule in case CE two two zero zero seven three seven seven that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violations, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant ninety days to come into compliance for items R eleven point eight point one A, sink-based cabinets, and R eleven point eight point four interior services. Failure to meet that timeline results in a penalty of $200 per calendar day. I also order that the, this particular property remain vacant during the entire time of the renovation, such time as renovation is complete or the end of my order.
How much?
Ninety days, $200 per.
Sorry.
No problem. Next case, please.
Page ten, item twenty two, case number CE two one zero one five 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 eight, Ivan Esten, Estensilo, Telo? We have service and someone is present? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, I do.
Please, is your mic on?
I do.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sherta Humberger. I don't live in the property. I live in twenty two twenty four Laurel Oak Drive, Valrico, Florida, three three five nine six. I'm representative, Ivan. I have attorney power to, to be his representative.
Okay, can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
Do you recognize that photo as the property?
Yes, I, I bring the, I bring the, the, you know, the copy. I bring the, the original.
Oh, we don't need the original.
Uh, I don't bring.
Because we can't, we can't. We'll have to keep it.
If you present it to us.
Oh, I don't bring any, any copy.
It's okay. We can recognize you as the representative.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to proceed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Officer Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The county received a complaint on eleven sixteen twenty twenty one for, uh, buildings being used as apartments at this location. Upon my site visit, the gate to these, uh, structures toward the rear of the property was open and accessible. Uh, a tenant had, uh, drove in just before I drove into the property. The, the tenant, I asked the tenant if she lived there. She stated that she did, and she also stated that others lived on the property, uh, also. Research found that the property, the, these apartments, converted apartments, were originally a tow barn that were closed in, and, uh, electric and plumbing added to them to, uh, become apartments. All these items came about without the proper processing of permits and engineer drawings to establish that they meet the requirements of the Florida Building Codes as dwellings. They had bootlegged, uh, water containers in the ground for their septic system. The photo of the very end of the building where it looks like a lean-to that was closed in, though that particular building was actually, uh, the septic lines were run out into the bayhead to the right of that picture. Nothing to trap the septic system.
Just free flow.
Just free flowing out into the wetlands. Upon, uh, the investigation, as you can see, there was overgrowth, accumulations, and outside open storage throughout. I received a call from the owner's attorney requesting a thirty-day extension on the case due to the fact the owner was in the process of evicting these occupants. That was granted. And due to department policy this past year with backlog of cases, they've received additional time, with our policy at that point in time. So however, the owner tends to be out of the country most of the time, and Ms. Berberger contacted me, and I met with her at location to advise of the conditions and the, uh, violations of the property. So with that visit with her on the property, we have established that no one is living in these buildings at this time. Uh, so the excessive dwelling portion of this is still in the hands of code enforcement, but the developmental services is involved in this case, also with the permitting side, the issues. However, with no occupants, we're comfortable to move forward with what is on the property that we can address.
Okay.
And that would be accumulations, outside open storage, and inoperable vehicles. So if, if they decide they want to try to keep these buildings, then they have to do the proper process with developmental services. However, we will continue to press to get the property cleaned up.
So we would like it to remain vacant?
Yes, until they get the proper permits.
Okay. All right. Ma'am, what would you like to add?
Well, eh, I bring a picture for all the cars with the tags. We have that, all the cars.
Okay.
I bring picture from the debris in the back and the tire. We remove all that.
Great.
Eh, uh, the owner is still out of the country, uh, he will be here in, eh, final August. He has to be here because he has the, the document for the RV, uh, to put a plate, to put the tag, to, to, to keep the, the RV like it has to be. Eh, the accumulation, well, we only have a few one, because all the, the rest I removed. Yeah?
Okay.
It's only, but the time I need is for him to be here. The tire's gone. I, I bring picture. I, you can take the picture.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is, is everything's pretty much taken care of with the exception of the tags, and he has to be here to do that?
Yeah, for the RV and the, for the, the addition, because it's some part of the contraction, the, the, we have permit for a storage.
Okay.
That, that's okay. But there's an addition. This addition was without permit, and that we have to demolish. And for that, I need him to be here.
And he'll be here in August?
At the end of the August.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sweeney?
According to the pictures that I just seen, it appears that there's still some overgrowth that needs to be dealt with. And, uh, of course, the RV, uh, she doesn't have a picture of the RV, but it's, uh, my photos should have had at least, uh, a picture of it. Uh, if not, then that was, uh, something that I might have left out, uh, by mistake, but. So at this time, if she's got all the tires picked up, all the miscellaneous junk and debris removed, then that's good.
Okay.
Uh, but it does appear that there's, there's still some overgrowth in at least the RV.
Yeah, it looks like there's still some work that needs to be done.
The RV that.
We need to do more work, you know, because the tire were removed only five days ago, and the debris, we don't have time to cut the, the grass.
I understand.
Yeah.
Sure.
For that is.
Communication has been?
Well, I've got communication with Ms. Berberger.
Okay.
Nothing with the owner.
Well, I'm in country, so, yeah.
So as long as she and I can communicate, you know, that's, that's a positive.
Okay. Um, any concerns with doing sixty days to give him a chance to get back in the country?
At this point, with the occupants gone, there's no life safety concerns.
Okay.
So sixty days is not a problem.
All right, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna rule for sixty days, and that'll give you time to have the owner come back into the country and take care of the issue with the tags. Um, in the meantime, you need to finish the cutting the grass and all those kind of things that you haven't gotten to yet, but make sure you get those taken care of, and just stay in touch. Give your information to Officer Sweeney so that you guys can stay in touch now that he's got a contact.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then we'll go through the process, and then you can take care of that when he comes back to the country.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
I rule in case CE two one zero one five 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 eight, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances as listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant sixty days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $175 per day be assessed. So you have sixty days, and then if it's not complete by then, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day.
Fifty.
After the sixty days. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
That concludes everyone in the audience. He's just here.
All right. Seeing that no one is present in the audience for the remaining cases on the agenda, I will now review the case materials previously provided by county staff. If I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances listed in staff's presentation, my ruling in each case will be based on the evidence presented, on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, and determine the amount of fine that will be assessed. Next case, please.
Page one, item one, case number CE two one zero one five nine one, Isabel Arcia. The location is one four eight Lookout Drive. We have service and no one is present.
Ready?
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
It's an afternoon.
Uh, almost. I'm the guy, Carter, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, presenting case CE two one zero one one five nine one. Property in question is located one forty eight Lookout Drive, Apollo Beach, Florida, three three five seven two. Property is owned PD, and the property was first cited on August eighteenth, twenty twenty one, and was cited for overgrowth. As of my last visit conducted seven seven twenty twenty two, grass has not been mowed to code. There has been no contact with the property owner at this time. There has been no contact with the property owner at this time.
Okay. My grant fourteen days to come into compliance, and if compliance is not achieved by that date, the fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Was the last case that you say remained vacant? The last case, was it remain vacant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure we got that. Next case is on page two, item four, case number CE two-one zero-one five-seven-one-three, Dana and Nemeth. We have service and no one is present.
Good morning, sir, Officer Green, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, in regards to case CE two-one zero-one five-seven-one-three. Uh, property located at five-zero-zero-seven Daca Drive, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-one-nine. This case here, I've had too much contact with the owners, uh, there's accumulations of junk and furniture there on the side of the property, and then in the backyard, there's like a, a burn pile with furniture that's out by the curb, but also on the rear of the property, there's some more, uh, accumulations and storage. There's the, what appears they're probably gonna try to burn it. But, uh, just overall, just junk, furniture, debris on the property that has not been attempted to be removed, and not, not really any involvement with the owner.
No communication?
Yeah.
Okay. I grant fourteen days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, the fine of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per day be assessed. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Page four, item ten, case number CE two-one zero-one zero-nine-three-nine, this case was pulled for staff. Page five, item eleven, case number CE two-one zero-one four-five-six-seven, Jane L. Alfrin. The location is six-oh-five Ronell Drive. We have service and no one is present, and this is a repeat violator case.
Morning, Officer Dave Jones, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case CE two-one zero-one four-five-six-seven, uh, six-oh-five Ronell Drive, Brandon, Florida, three-three-five-one-one, uh, owned by Jane Alfrin, uh, zoned ASC one. Uh, case was opened up ten-twenty-two-twenty-one, uh, for overgrowth, uh, as of my last inspection at seven-fifteen-twenty. Uh, the, um, violation was still there. I've come in contact with her, uh, two different times, but the time she says she was gonna clear the land has not done so. Uh, as previously stated, she's a repeat violator, uh, case CE one-nine-zero-one four-zero-five-nine, that was adjudicated on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, so we are looking for a, uh, asking for a per occurrence order.
Okay. I'm assuming no communication?
I'm sorry?
No communication?
I've talked to her twice, she said both times she's going to clear the land, it has not happened.
Okay. All right, I rule, I grant, I rule that basically the evidence presented, I'm sorry, wrong one. I rule that the property is again in violation of Hillsborough County Code and Ordinances listed in staff's presentation, and of the previous order dated two-twenty-twenty. Twenty. This constitutes repeat violation as defined in Florida statutes. Further, I grant fourteen days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed. Additionally, a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars per day, per occurrence, be imposed for any repeat violations after compliance is achieved.
Item twelve, case number CE two-one zero-one four-eight-one-three, Scott M. Edwards and McLare- McLorraine, M. Lorraine Edwards, location eighteen-seventeen Laurel Oak Drive. We have service and no one is present.
Officer Jones, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, uh, case number CE two-one zero-one four-eight-one-three for eighteen-seventeen Laurel Oak Drive, Valrico, Florida, three-three-five-nine-six, owned by Scott and Lorraine Edwards, zoned RSC six. Uh, property is not in foreclosure. Property was first inspected on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, current violations are accumulations, overgrowth, outside open storage, and roofs and parts thereof. I have not.
I grant fourteen days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed.
Page six, item thirteen, case number CE two-one zero-one five-four-one-six, Walter H. Freeman, location three-zero-zero-four, Rolling Acres Place. We have service and no one is present.
Officer Jones, uh, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, CE, uh, case number is CE two-one zero-one five-four-one-six, uh, three thousand and four, Rolling Acres Place, Valrico, Florida, three-three-five-nine-six, owned by Walter Freeman, zoned RSC four. Property is not in foreclosure. Uh, first inspection was done on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one for inoperable vehicles. My last inspection on seven-fifteen, two thousand, uh, twenty-two. Uh, the, the violations were still present, and I have not had any contact with the property owner.
Grant fourteen days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed.
Item fourteen, case number CE two-one zero-zero-six-eight-zero-two, this case complied as of July eleventh. Page seven, item fifteen, case number CE two-one zero-one zero-four-two-four, this ca- case complied as of July eleventh. Page eight, item seventeen, case number CE two-one zero-one four-four oh-nine, this case complied as of July twelfth. Page nine, item nineteen, case number CE two-one zero-one five-one-two-five, Joseph L. Kearns. We have service and no one is present.
Officer Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The county received a complaint on eleven-two twenty-twenty-one for this location. The property is zoned AS one. Property is not in foreclosure. Upon my site visit on eleven-three twenty-twenty-one, I observed overgrowth, inoperable vehicles, and roof and parts thereof on the mobile home that needed to be repaired. I've spoken with the owner via telephone, or the father of the occupant, who claims to be the owner of this property, and said he would do what he could to get things corrected and fixed up. Unfortunately, um, the overgrowth was taken care of, the inops have been removed. However, the roof still has issues, and that's where we're at today.
Okay. I grant thirty days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed.
Item twenty, case number CE two-one zero-one five-two-nine-seven, Arca Homes LLC, location forty-six-fourteen Cameron Road. We have service and no one is present.
Officer Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The complaint came to us on eleven-eight twenty-twenty-one for this location, the property located at forty-six-fourteen Cameron Road, Plant City. The property is zoned AS one. Property is not in foreclosure. I made a site visit at this location on eleven-nine twenty-twenty-one. Found the property be overgrown. It's an, kind of an undeveloped piece of property. The, there's been no contact with the owners whatsoever on this property. Property's still overgrown.
I grant fourteen days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed.
Item twenty-one, case number CE two-one zero-one five-three-five-one, Triple Star Mobile Investments LLC, location one-four-eight-sixty, Dr. Martin Luther King Bull, Junior Boulevard. We have service and no one is present.
Officer Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The complaint came into us on eleven-nine twenty-twenty-one. Uh, this property has a history of issues and problems. The last few complaints we've received on this property came from our fire department off of Sydney Dover Road. Property is continually, uh, having issues, accumulations, inoperable vehicles. The vehicles have been removed, however, the accumulations continue to, to, uh, be on the property along with the, the dumpster. Usually that dumpster is set on fire, and, and, uh, we continue to have these problems with this individual.
I grant seven days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of three hundred dollars per day be assessed.
Page eleven, item twenty-five, case number CE two-one zero-one one-seven-seven-six, Anwar Yanez. We have, oh, location one-one-four-two-five Buster Bean Drive. We have service and no one is present.
Good afternoon, Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Case number CE twenty-one oh-one one-seven-seven-six. No life safety issues. Property is located at eleven-four-two-five Buster Bean Drive. Mr. Yanez is the owner. The property is vacant, zoned AS one, not in foreclosure, with seventeen inspections to date. First inspection was eight-twenty-two thousand and twenty-one, and the violations are accumulations and overgrowth. I have contacted the owner. My last inspection was seven-eleven twenty-twenty-two.
Communication? Any response?
Initially, there was two mobile homes on there and a collapsed RV. The mobile homes have now been demolished, and that's the remnants of it.
Significant, significant amount of debris.
Yeah.
I grant twenty-one days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of five hundred dollars per day be assessed.
Page thirteen, item thirty, case number CE two-one zero-one four-five-four-one, estate of Samuel Hefner. Location one-oh-nine-fifteen East Old Hillsborough Avenue. We have service and no one is present.
Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, case number twenty-one oh-one four-five-four-one. No life safety issues. Property is located at one-zero-nine-one-five East Old Hillsborough Avenue, and owned by Samuel Hefner, estate of, zoned RSC nine, not in foreclosure or homesteaded. Property is first inspected on ten-twenty-two-twenty-one. Has significant overgrowth. Has been ten inspections, with my last one on seven, seven-eleven two thousand and twenty-two.
Communication?
I believe the man's dead. Important to the neighbors, the neighbors are trying to buy the property, and they don't really know what to do, how to go about it.
To grant seven days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed. Jane, I, I, I amend that. Grant seven days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, but fine of fifty dollars per day be assessed.
Page fourteen, item thirty-one, case number CE two-one zero-one six-seven-five-two, Laura Hill and Kelly Nicole Leonard. The location is one-oh-five-twelve Bay Hill Circle. We have service and no one is present.
Chris Madison, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, CE twenty-one oh-one six-seven-five-two. No life safety issues. Property is one-zero-five-one-two Bay Hill Circle, owned by Laura Hill and Kelly Leonard. Zoned PD, not in foreclosure or homesteaded. First inspected on December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Remaining violations are accumulation, fences, and exterior walls. Ten visits to date, with the last one on seven-eleven. The lady blew up my phone this morning at like six o'clock in the morning. Um, I didn't answer it. She's gotten a lot of progress done.
How much time do you think she needs to complete, based on the volume?
I'd give her thirty days.
Okay. I grant thirty days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred dollars per day be assessed.
Item thirty-two, case number CE two-one zero-one three-four-eight-two, this case complied as of July fourteenth. Page sixteen, item thirty-six, case number CE two-one zero-one five-four-six-six, this case complied as of July eleventh. Page seventeen, item thirty-seven, case number CE two-one zero-one five-five-five-zero, this case complied as of July eleventh. Page eighteen, item forty-one, case number CE two-one zero-one five-seven-two-six, this case complied as of July eleventh, and that concludes the agenda.
Excellent, before we adjourn, is, is the recording secretary still online?
Yes, I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanna restate my motion for case, uh, page ten, case number twenty-two. Case number CE two-one zero-one five-five-five-eight. I'm not quite sure if I put on record that that property needed to remain vacant, so I'm just gonna restate my motion.
Okay, go ahead, go right ahead, we're ready.
I rea- I rule in case CE two-one zero-one five-five-five-eight, that basis name is presented, I find that the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by a violator and the violator's history, grant sixty days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that, by that date, the fine of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per day be assessed. I also order that the property remain vacant during the, during that entire pro- process until the excessive dwelling issue is resolved.
All right, we've got it.
Thank you very much, ladies, I appreciate it. We are adjourned. Thank you.